We have nothing to report out of closed session. We'll start the public hearing, Matthew. Do I need to read the whole title?
I can do it. So we have our public hearings, our first step in the disclosure process. We're for contract reopeners for the California School Employees Association. And so it's a requirement to open a public hearing if anyone would like to speak to the reopeners. If no one wants to speak to it, then we would close the public hearing and move to the next agenda item. So we will create a time right now to open up the chat box. And if you would like to speak to 5.1 contract reopeners, California School Employees Association, please put your name in the chat box and list it as a for the contract reopener. That's the only thing we are opening for public hearing for public discussion right now.
We'll leave like what a minute for if anyone wants to comment on this?
Yeah. It's not typically something that we haven't even begun the process. So we typically don't have anyone that speaks to this.
Okay, I'm gonna take that as no one wants to comment on that. So we are going to move on. We got.
We got one.
Okay.
Yeah, we have one, Nicole Marzo. And it needs to be only on the this particular item. I believe it's going to be Michelle or Ashley that's going to open it up for Nicole.
All right, she's got it. It's open. Hi, hi. I had just, I was, I know you went into closed session about contract reopener. And then at the beginning of the meeting, it sounded like you hadn't even begun it. So I was curious, I don't exactly know what I'm curious about, but I'm curious, have we begun negotiations with the teachers to for back in the classroom? And I might not have my words right. I'm hoping I'm getting my question across appropriately. And can anybody offer us an update?
So this is a contract reopener for California School Employees Association. This is not the teachers. So we, there couldn't be a comment on that particular item response as of to this particular item.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like we don't have any other comments on this topic. So we are going to move on to adoption and approval of the agenda. I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
My second. So all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna apologize in advance to everyone for my internet. It's just really bad. It's going in and out right now. So I will blame it on the weather. All right, so let's move on to special recognitions for students of the month. Kennelworth, Petaluma Junior High School, Casa Grande High, and Petaluma High.
We'll go ahead and take them in that order, starting with Kennelworth, then Petaluma Junior, Casa Grande, Petaluma High.
So our first student of the month for Kennelworth is Sariah. And please pronounce your name correctly if I'm butchering it. For all the students, Sariah Madadi. And we also have William Torres Barrera.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our January student of the month, Sariah Madadi. Sariah was chosen student of the month because she is one of Kennelworth's most outstanding students and citizens. Sariah has maintained a 4.0 grade point average her entire time at Kennelworth while being enrolled in our most rigorous academic program. Impressively, Sariah earned five A-plus grades the first semester, including in her accelerated math course. Conscientious, respectful, hardworking, and kind. Here are just a few superlatives Sariah's teachers use to describe the talent to the young lady. Ms. Crozier, Sariah's science teacher, shared, "Sariah is a positive in class. Sariah is always engaged and her work is exceptional." Tariya's advanced English teacher, Ms. Chavez, shared, "Sariah is a strong writer with an ability to show compassion through her words." "We recently wrote an essay about a book we had finished reading, and Sariah wrote, 'The lessons include the idea that a person's social status does not guarantee happiness. Even the tiniest talents make you unique, and a friendly face will always follow you through the darkest times. Isn't that beautiful?" added Ms. Chavez. "While Sariah is an outstanding student, she is also a talented musician who plays both the piano and the trumpet." Ms. Hopkins, Sariah's band instructors, eager to share, "Sariah is a wonderful student that excelled as a musician. Sariah has a great role model for other students in the class and is a natural trumpet player." "Sariah was proud to share that in her sixth grade, she was received a band award for being the most improved musician. After high school, Sariah would like to possibly attend the UC and pursue a career in law or politics." Kennelworth cannot be more proud of you, Sariah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to announce our January student of the month, William Torres Barrera. William was chosen student of the month because of his academic excellence and exemplary citizenship. William is surely one of Kennelworth's brightest and hardworking students. William has earned a 4.0 grade point average in all three semesters that he's been a student at Kennelworth. More impressive yet, William earned five A-plus grades the first semester this year. William's teachers were universal in their praise for him. Ms. Park, who had William as a student for both seventh and eighth grade in her Spanish class, shared, "It's such a pleasure to have William in my class. He's respectful, responsible, and just overall a great kid." Mr. Contua, William's seventh and eighth grade history teacher, enthusiastically shared, "William is an exceptional student. He's a great role model for other students and possesses characteristics every teacher would want their students to have. William has a great work ethic, fantastic sense of humor, and he has great respect for his teachers and his classmates." Ms. Chavez, William's advanced English teacher, was also eager to share that William is a creative writer and he has immaturity beyond his years. As a parent, he cares deeply about social issues and he has shared he wants to help end racism, racism. Not only is William an excellent student, he's also a rock-solid basketball player. William was a valuable member of the Colts' seventh-grade basketball team. Being selected a member of the Colts' basketball team was one of William's proudest accomplishments while a student at Kennelworth. Mr. Schmidt, William's coach, described his play as dauntless and tenacious. William shared that the Colts' one-point win over the archrival Petaluma Junior High last year was the highlight of his season. William would like to continue playing basketball in high school for Casa Grande. After high school, William would like to attend college and pursue medical care, possibly as an anesthesiologist. Kennelworth Junior High is confident that William has a bright future ahead of him. Congratulations, William.
Congratulations. All right, moving on to Petaluma Junior High School, we have Ashley Nay and Trevor Dunn.
Hi, I'm Kati from Petaluma Junior High. I'm going to be reading for Ashley. Petaluma Junior High is very excited to present Ashley Nay as one of our January 2021 students of the month. Ashley was born on March 29, 2007, in nearby Santa Rosa. She has been an excellent student and an avid performer, and a very active member of the community, providing service through several school and community organizations. Ashley is a natural leader and loves to put her time into worthy causes. At school, Ashley is one of those hardworking yet unassuming students. Her transcript shows nearly all As throughout junior high. She has a very strong worth ethic and is very enthusiastic about her studies. Her PE teacher says, "Ashley is an intelligent and strong role model student who is frequently willing to ask and answer questions, contributes to class discussions, and consistently participates during activities." Last year, she received the principal's award for her outstanding academic efforts and citizenship. Performance and community service are Ashley's passions. She had big roles in her elementary school plays, Moana and Alice in Wonderland, and performed for the school talent show. She was also in the school chorus and ensemble group, occasionally performing solos on stage. In addition, in sixth grade, Ashley was part of a group who developed a video for a whole school assembly. As for community service, Ashley has a long list of accomplishments. She is the social media coordinator for her virtual book club, the treasurer of her climate action club, and an avid member of 4H and BSA Scouts, participating in a variety of trainings and projects to numerous to list. Ashley looks forward to attending the National Youth Leader Training Summer Camp as soon as she is able. In her spare time, Ashley enjoys selling, riding her bicycle, drawing, playing video games, reading, tutoring her brother, and talking to her friends. She looks forward to high school, getting a job, and adding to her savings account and getting her driver's license. Ashley is an amazing individual who has a zest for life. Her proud parents say Ashley is their favorite person in the world. She has grown into a smart, independent person and will lead in any situation she chooses. She helps her friends and family succeed, and when she is around, everything runs smoother. We agree. Ashley Nay is one of our students who stands out as an excellent role model. We are proud to honor her with the title of student of the month.
Hi, my name is Grace Young. I'm also from Petaluma Junior High. And so we are honored to present Trevor Dunn as one of our first students of the month for 2021. Trevor was born in Turlock on April 4, 2007, and he has been a part of our district since kindergarten. He is also an all-around excellent student, brother, athlete, and rancher, not necessarily in that order. Trevor is one who always puts forth his best effort in whatever he does. Trevor enjoys school, works hard, and earns mostly As. He hasn't missed a beat since we implanted distance learning, demonstrating flexibility, adaptability, and excellent focus. His art teacher has a list of Trevor's exemplary qualities: excellent student, hard worker, great artist, tries his best, takes pride in his work, excellent participation, and a pleasure to have in class. Trevor intends to continue his academic efforts throughout high school. He looks forward to attending college and finding a rewarding career. Argiculture is one of Trevor's passions. He has been an active member of the Pengrove 4H Club for eight years. His projects include outdoor adventure, arts and crafts, and woodworking. He raises market hogs for the Sonoma County Fair and is quite the hog expert after five years of investment. In addition, Trevor enjoys playing sports. He is particularly involved in flag football through mostly the Boys and Girls Club of Petaluma and was on the PJHS wrestling team before the pandemic. He looks forward to continuing his wrestling activities in the near future. Family is another priority of Trevor's. He chuckles at the memory of his younger brother getting him out twice while playing in a kickball tournament at his elementary school. Trevor enjoys playing video games and camping with his family and is the rare student who truly appreciates that his parents push him to the best of his abilities. His parents add that they are very proud of Trevor and are happy to see him excelling, even during distance learning. They look forward to seeing what the future holds for him. Trevor is solidly strong student and a good citizen. He cares about his future, his health, his family, and his community. We are proud to have Trevor represent Petaluma Junior High School as student of the month.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. Our junior high students are amazing. So let's move on to Casa Grande. We're going to recognize Emily Melton and Ryan Edmondson.
To present Emily Melton, first student of the month. Emily Melton is a dedicated and hard-working senior at Casa Grande High School who enjoys the fine arts, running, and reading. Being involved in different clubs, sports, and her youth group, she is constantly maintaining a delicate balance between that and her academics, which includes five AP classes this year. Emily loves painting and creating art in her free time. She also enjoys working with children, have been an assistant teacher at an art camp and a childcare provider at her church. After graduating high school, she hopes to attend UC Santa Cruz or Stanford University to pursue a major in psychology. Following college, Emily hopes to integrate her love for art into her knowledge gained in psychology to become an art therapist for children and teenagers. Congratulations, Emily. I am also proud to present Ryan Edmondson. Ryan is a seventeen-year-old senior at Casa Grande High School. School is very important to Ryan, and he invests a lot of time into studying or doing other school-related work. That has carried over into his final and strange year of high school. During a typical school year, he would spend the majority of his time practicing gymnastics. Ryan has been competing as a junior Olympic athlete for more than ten years. He has been putting in twenty hours of work per week for the majority of that time. Things have obviously changed due to the lockdown, only allowing him to practice for shorter periods of time, but he is hoping they'll all change soon. After high school, Ryan intends to go to college that offers gymnastics to continue competing. He plans to study some form of engineering or mathematics. Congratulations, Ryan.
Great, thank you. Congratulations. Moving on to Petaluma High School, we have Shayla Wolfle and Jack Santos.
All right, I'll be representing PHS. And first, we'd like to recognize Shayla Wolfle. Shayla Wolfle is a hard-working and dedicated student. She has maintained excellent grades and played volleyball at PHS, where she was awarded the most improved player. She was also on the track and field team where she participated in a variety of events ranging from long-distance running to triple jump. Throughout Shayla's high school career, she has volunteered over a hundred hours. She has worked with alphabet soup and assisted the PJHS volleyball coach during tryouts as well as with the team. Her most memorable and impactful volunteer experience were traveling to Tijuana, Mexico to build housing for families, clean up the old Tijuana dump, and assist in the building process of a medical clinic. She continued her travels when she went to Accra, Ghana to assist in the classrooms and build relationships with children who have faced modern-day slavery. In addition to her dedication to school and helping others, she holds a job at Norcal Solar working as a bookkeeper. In her free time, she enjoys long-distance running and baking for her friends and family. Shayla's commitment to her studies have already begun to pay off as she has received academic scholarships to several of the schools she has applied to. She plans to attend a four-year university, majoring in nursing, with the goal of becoming a nurse anesthetist. During and after college, she plans to continue her travels to serve others. Congrats, Shayla. And then our next student of the month is Jack Santos. Jack Santos is a dedicated and hard-working student who truly loves to learn. Throughout his academic career at Petaluma High School, Jack earned straight As while enrolled in Petaluma's rigorous honors and AP classes. Because he enjoys any class that challenges him to think, his favorites span many subjects, from science to math to history. At Petaluma, Jack has distinguished himself as an accomplished athlete. He plays football, wrestles, and competes in track and field. This past year, Jack was chosen captain of the football and wrestling team. Although Jack is proud of his accomplishments as a student and an athlete, he is most proud of his generosity and the way he treats others. Jack plans to major in sports management and communication so that he can work with people in a position of responsibility and stay involved in sports. Congrats, Jack.
Great, congratulations, everyone. Okay, so moving on, we have comments from the public on non-agendized items. So before we begin, I'm going to read our blurb or policy about public comments.
I think you skipped something.
And American Voice. Oh, my gosh. That is awful. I am so sorry. Okay, item 7.2, student report to the board from McDowell Elementary School. Thank you, Sheldon.
There's a few students, so just give me a minute to promote them all. Okay, I think we've got everybody.
I'm just taking a peek. Did Kevin Corainio get back in the meeting? He just let me know that he was kicked out, so I'm wondering if he's back in.
Do you want us to, if he doesn't come back on in a minute, we can see if Casa is ready to go?
Um, yeah, it says it's not letting him in, so maybe we could let Casa go.
Casa, are you ready? Or should we give Kevin another minute?
I can start promoting the Casa people. Oh, I think Kevin might be here.
Is that you, Kevin? No. Let's just wait for Kevin. There he is, okay.
All right.
Hi, my name is Kevin, and I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, my name is Adrian, and I'm in sixth grade.
And my name is Helen, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hi, my name is Mitchell, and I'm in fifth grade.
We're excited to tell you how this year is going at McDowell School. We have continued to show our monarch values during distance learning. Let's take a look. We started our school year back to school pickup. It was great to see all the teachers and wave at our friends driving by. In August, we all got to welcome our new principal, Mr. Samuel Martinez. He's a great addition to our school community.
Our fantastic teachers and amazing staff have been working hard during distance learning, at home, at school, and on Zoom. They are learning new ways to teach, to work, and to keep us safe. Many teachers have even become technology superstars. We have been working hard, too. We have shown responsibility by turning in our work each week in Google Classroom and in CSO. We have also shown a lot of perseverance.
But we also have a lot of fun. We have had several spirit days, including hat day, costume day, and pajama day. We also have fun playing games and doing art on Zoom. Students attending cohorts enjoy time outside on the playground, which is a great way to practice respect and compassion. And our teachers have gotten really creative with Bitmoji. 2020 ended on a good note with the winter wonderland drive to pick up. We love seeing everyone in a festive mood. Distance learning has been challenging, but we are making the best of it.
We asked our fellow students what they love about McDowell School, and here's what they said.
Hi, my name is, and some of the best things about McDowell are that we do really fun activities like the Walkathon and more. And our staff and teachers are really nice.
Hi, I'm Sika, and reasons why I like McDowell School is because we have amazing staffs and teachers, and they're really nice. And also at our school, we can learn instruments like the flute and clarinet, and it's really fun. And we also have fun events like Feliz Navidad, Fiesta Navideña, and the Walkathon.
So something unique about our school is that we have festivals and we have like breakfasts and the Halloween line. And it's just super fun, and our parents can go watch us. And we also have the Walkathon. It's very fun. Kids can socialize and different exercises. And the best thing about it is me, I like art a lot. So our art teacher, Ms. Booth, used to tell us that if we make mistakes, that we just go on from our mistakes. And I was just drawing, and I made a mistake, but it turned out pretty good.
What up, guys? It's Kevin from my McDowell School. I like to go to my school so I can hang out with some of my friends. I go to that school. It's fun. It's just now, then it's when you're at school, a lot of stuff you can learn there.
The best thing about McDowell is that there, every problem we have will always erase because once you make some friends, it'll feel, the heart inside will be warm inside.
McDowell School is such a good place to be. I hear kids laughing at the time they're always going to roll with each other. And people are having a great time. It was known that activity, always positivity. They always find a way to get around stuff, even though it's a little bit difficult. We're all unique. But we all get along. Sure, people have hard times, but even though we help, even though we're different, we can negotiate and make good stuff, and that can build a really great friendship. My second grade art that I did is here, Starlight. Here is my Horizon Road. Here's my Walkathon shirt, as you can see here. I hope you like that.
Let's find out more of the favorite things. It all begins with our school vision. All McDowell students are actively engaged learners and communicators. Our school community supports bi-literacy, compassion, critical thinking, academic achievement, and contribution to our global society. McDowell Monarchs love to spend time outdoors. One of our favorite places is the Oasis. It is a great place to hang out and talk with friends. Did we mention we loved outdoors? We duly love at McDowell to take care of and learn about the environment and how to be positive member of our global society. We participate in watershed and environmental education with straw, iUbi, and steelhead in the classroom. We also participate in the Petaluma River cleanup at our own Washington Creek. Our third graders work with Pampas in Mexico to study endangered migratory birds in the Migos Alados project. Another migratory creature that is very important to us are mascot, the monarch butterfly. We have monarch butterflies right in our own native habitat garden. We also grow milkweed, and are sending seeds home with students to plant. Next year, we are planning to become an official monarch waste station. Our native habitat garden is growing beautifully and becoming a fantastic home for all kinds of butterflies, other insects, birds, and plants. We can explore and get up close to nature right outside our classroom door.
We have a lot going on with music and the arts at our school, including some exciting new opportunities that are starting now. We are so lucky to have Ms. Breeze at McDowell. We are even luckier that she has taken her skills to YouTube. Did you know she had her own channel? We are excited to complete our it's elementary music education program that we started in 2018 with the Santa Rosa Symphony. I really hope we get to go back and play with them soon at the Green Music Center. Right now, though, we are very excited about our new opportunity. Right now, though, we are very excited about our new opportunity that is starting soon. Play Marimba is coming to McDowell School. We look forward to sharing our progress with you. Another new opportunity starting this week is musical theater. Students will be presenting The Wizard of Oz. They are even having costumes delivered to their homes. This reminds me of all the fun class plays that we have done before.
Some students told us that the library was their favorite place at school. Ms. James has been busy reading stories and checking out books in inglés y en español. A very important part of our school vision is bi-literacy. That's why we are lucky to have Maestra Prezel and Maestra Hancock, helping us grow and develop our Spanish and English literacy. No matter what language we s- we we de- develop, oh no, we started with. Did you know that we also have students at our school who speak Arabic, Urdu, Chetino, Portuguese, Japanese, and more? We are starting a new programs. It se llama se llama en comunidad. The teachers are meeting with one of the program authors, Lucia Dira Herrera, to learn about how to share this program. With us, we are getting new books for our classrooms, la biblioteca, that are going to tell more of our stories and help us see ourselves in new ways in the world. We are going to learn to use our voices and develop a strong a strong sense of identity. I'm not sure what that means, but I know, but I will know more next time. For now, I know it means that Maestra Hancock is reading us a lot of bilingual poetry in Spanish class. And we are getting ready to start writing our own poems this week. We are even hoping to have a poetry slam event in the spring.
We really love our special events and celebrations, being able to take time to be with our friends and family. Several of them, especially Global School Play Day and Fiesta Navideña, are unique to our school. Global School Play Day is the best because all we do the whole day is play however we want. Fiesta Navideña is a special night because our whole community comes together to celebrate the holidays with singing. It's fun to hear the little kids sing the same songs that we did when we were little. The decorations are really pretty and there's also good food.
There are so many more things that make McDowell a special place to learn, play, and grow, but I think we're out of time for tonight. Like our mascot, we Monarchs are going to continue to get stronger, develop our abilities, and eventually spread our wings to find our place in the world.
We hope you enjoyed our presentation. Do you have any questions?
How many of you guys have planted milkweed at home for the Monarchs? Okay, Mr. Harris did. Helen did. Awesome. Have you guys seen any but, well, I guess it's winter, so not right now, but are you gonna see some in the spring? Fingers crossed.
Um, the teacher showed us pictures of them. There was like this, there was like this little titty, um, butterfly in its cocoon and it finally came out.
Oh, that's so cool. Oh my gosh. I have a question about the poetry slam. Is that for all the grade levels?
We're hoping so.
Yeah, I, we don't know what, we know what it is, but we don't know if it's for all the grade levels. So I hope, all the grade levels, I hope it's for all because, I mean, I need to learn poetry at some point.
Please invite the board when you figure it out. We'd love to be part of it.
I will. If I can, maybe.
Well, thank you. That was really great. Proud of you, elementary school kids, speaking in front of people. Alright, so now we are moving on to Casa, Presentation of American Voices Cluster at Casa Grande High School.
Well, thank you. To begin heartfelt gratitude to the board for the opportunity to feature some of the great work happening at Casa Grande High School tonight. So tonight you will be hearing from a team of teachers who are leading the American Voices Cluster, or we also call them small learning communities. But it's important to note that at Casa, there are a total of four small learning communities that all eleventh and twelfth grade students elect into. Each cluster features a different theme that runs throughout the curriculum, as well as a set of electives that offer students in each cluster more opportunity to practice and explore the thematic curriculum in a wide variety of hands-on career technical education classes and others. One last note here before I turn it over to my colleagues. American Voices is the most recent addition to the menu of small learning communities at Casa and is in the middle of its first year, having experienced a phenomenal start with many bright spots ahead. The elective course titled Race, Class, and Gender in America is part of the elective offerings that are housed under the banner of American Voices and is a semester class partnered with another semester course titled Legal Studies. Lastly, an exciting new course for the cluster is actually being introduced to the board for review this evening for a first reading and if approved, will be a solid step in formalizing a CTE pathway for American Voices. This course is called Introduction to Communication and Media Studies. Without further ado, I turn it over to Ms. Goodman, our teacher facilitator for the cluster, who will begin the presentation. Thank you once again for the opportunity to be here this evening, and as always, please let me know when you have time to swing by Casa and enjoy our students and our program. Thank you again. Ms. Goodman?
Hi, thank you for having us. Um, just to check, am I okay to share my screen to go through our slideshow? That's okay? Yes, go for it. One second, I've got it right here. Thank you for bearing with me. So the American Voices Cluster. Um, we have our mission statement, which I believe the board got ahead of time, but, um, we're focusing on how our country is transformed by the artistic, political, and cultural diversity of the American people, and you can read further on that. Um, but I'm here mostly to talk to you, of course, about my role as English teacher, and I actually teach the English courses for this cluster, both the eleventh and the twelfth grade. And the idea of all SLCs, right, is to build deeper understanding in our students by connecting the curriculum between their history courses and their English literature and nonfiction that they're reading. Um, so we collaborate on large assignments together. We coordinate what we're teaching, um, throughout each semester so that hopefully what they're working on in history can build upon whatever we're studying in the English class as well. So one of the main focuses is just providing a variety of voices, experience, and viewpoints in the literature, nonfiction, and poetry that students are exposed to in my class. Um, so for instance, in eleventh grade right now, students are reading selections from several different books that deal with the issue of systemic racism in America. So this week they're comparing some of Ibram X. Kendi's work from How to Be an Anti-Racist with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Letters from Birmingham Jail. We even are tying that, um, in to compare how Amanda Gorman's inaugural poem that she read at, um, President Biden's inauguration last week, how some of the language in that poem relates to both of these works. Um, so again, just trying to show students the connections between art, literature, nonfiction, and of course, how, um, issues that are happening in our country and our world kind of find their way into that kind of, uh, content. Um, right now in my senior classes, we are reading, um, Aldous Huxley's Brave New World. So with that classic, I'm going to be pairing later in this unit, some work from Jimmy Santiago Baca, um, in particular, his Meditations on the South Valley. So in this unit, we're working a lot with, um, conditioning and how the cultures that we live in were conditioned by not just our government, but by our behaviors, by what we consume. And that poem, um, is autobiographical and talks about, uh, Baca's experience after his home burned down and he had to live in a different area and juxtaposing his experience. Um, we also have assignments between the English and the history classes that students, um, work on in both classes. So Mr. Siders and I developed the children's literature assignment. We asked students to choose a social or political issue that they had an opinion or a viewpoint on, and then use a children's story to teach their viewpoint. So not only was it an opportunity for them to be incredibly creative and thoughtful, they really had to think about how to teach something at an age-appropriate level. Um, we kind of use Dr. Seuss as one of our guiding points on that, right? He can get across a very large message in a very small whimsical story. And then Ms. Brackett and I had our seniors do a bucket list assignment after reading Into the Wild. They had to identify several different types of goals for themselves, um, and then connect those to Casa Grande's graduate profile, which says that all Casa graduates will be highly employable, broadly literate, civically engaged, and have a personal vision. So again, making those connections, um, all across the board with all of the cluster. And of course, the three of us work very closely together. And I think we are having a really incredible first year. Our students are raring to go. They're engaged. They're interested. They have a lot to say. And hopefully, we're providing them opportunities to explore everything that's going on right now. And now I'll kick it over to Mr. Siders.
Be able to hit the present? Can you get a little bigger?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So, uh, I'm just gonna introduce the US history part of the junior year. So we start with looking at, uh, some of the contemporary experiences of people of color. So I give them readings from Paul Allen Allen's The Sacred Hoop, Vasquez's Latino-Latino Thought, uh, Joy de Grues', Post-Traumatic Slavery Syndrome. And we look at a film called Real Bad Arabs to look at the experiences of Arab-Americans and how they're portrayed in the media. Um, next slide. And then, uh, in terms of ethnic studies, uh, I embed it within the, the context of, of history. So as, these are just examples. If we're looking at World War II, in addition to, say, the United States fighting Germany, we look at the Zoot suit riots, the Detroit race riots, Japanese internment. If it's the twenties, we focus on the Harlem Renaissance, um, looking at Asian exclusion, the Indian New Deal, Operation Letback. Um, the sixties and seventies, we'll be looking at the American Indian Movement, the Black Panthers, Stonewall, for example. And, uh, that's the US history part. And next, uh, I think we go to Ms. Brackett for Government Econ.
Hi, yes. So in, um, Government and Econ, we have a semester of Government and a semester of Economics. Um, we follow, obviously, the California framework of standards, but then build in both historical, you know, um, implications of systemic racism and connect to current day events. Um, so for example, this fall semester, we followed, um, along with the election, as we learned of the structure of government. Um, while looking at, say, the, um, amendments, we studied specifically the, um, fourteenth, um, and fifteenth amendments, uh, thirteen, fourteenth, and fifteenth connecting to voting rights, um, the failure of reconstruction, and the expansion of systemic racism and disenfranchisement. And then we looked at the historical implications of disenfranchisement. And then looked at today's, um, election, um, and the whole idea of mail-in voting, um, voting from home during a pandemic, um, connecting their lives, what's happening, um, and forming discussions on this. We look at it, um, from both views, both standpoints, um, both political parties. We have, um, really connect with that idea of students, um, getting civically engaged and finding their place in society and their voice while recognizing and hearing others. And I have to admit, while we're talking about some really tough topics in our history and our current worlds, I was continually impressed with, one, their willingness to engage in an online learning environment and willing to listen to each other and be respectful with each other because we have different, um, spectrums of political views and, and thoughts in class. Um, we build on things that, um, they do in English class with Sarah where they're reading portions of, um, How to Be an Anti-Racist by, um, Dr. Kendi. We listened to a TED Talk by him, talked about how we can be an anti-racist within our lives, our community, government. Um, uh, we listened to Amanda Gorman's poem and we dissected it in a historical sense. Um, in terms of economics, we're currently looking, um, starting a project about women in business, um, looking at Yellen as our, um, Treasury appointment. Um, we also are bringing in the impact of the immigrant workforce on our economy and the importance of that, debunking myths, um, and looking at the current events like, um, undocumented workers within the meatpacking industry and whether or not they should receive the vaccine. One such example, and, um, also in governments, they had to do was, um, look at the fact that we had a open senate seat for California, go through California's demographics, um, politically, um, stance, and decide who they thought would be the best pick for, um, a, a California senator to represent California. So we basically take a lot of current issues, historical issues, and connect it to the structure and basics of economics and government. And Todd, back to you.
So for the elective, um, the elective Race, Class, and Gender in America was actually suggested initially by a counselor at Casa, Brett Sklove, who reported a lot of student demand for a class that would look at just these issues, uh, race and ethnic studies, class issues and gender issues, and suggested that the social studies department take it on, and I thought it'd be bottled it after some existing courses. And I want to first talk about the format of the class. So the format is that I provide a little bit of background in each of the units, race, class, and gender, mostly definition. The highlight are what I call the sleds, the student-led discussions, and I want to build off what my colleagues have said about, hopefully, I'm not freezing, uh, about the respect that they have for each other and their ability to have these incredibly complex college-level discussions about these really, really powerful issues that we're facing today. They are charged with, I randomly select them, they're charged with, uh, finding two articles of opposing views or differing views on the same issue, and then they lead the discussion, they lead the seminars, and I can, I can just sit back and just, my jaw just drops. Um, wanna go to the next slide? Thanks. So for the race, the, again, my contribution is primarily definitional. We look at the history of race, whiteness. Uh, we look at different ways of explaining it, so we look at critical race theory, but I then contrast that with structural functionalism, and we question whether even these ideas are particularly valid. Uh, next. Uh, then we do the kind of the same thing with class. It's actually based on the sociology textbook. Uh, what are the social classes that we're in? Uh, are there cultures with them? Is there, uh, an elite culture? Is there a middle-class culture, a working-class culture? We look at intergenerational poverty, um, uh, and of course, the situation that unfortunately too many of us are in right now, precarity. Uh, next slide. And then gender, again, very definitional. We look at basic definitions of gender, gender roles, sex, and orientation. Uh, we look at feminism and critiques of feminism. We discuss definitions of the patriarchy. Uh, we look at, uh, media images and the contributions to the label of rape culture, if we have time. And, and I say if we have time because this is a semester elective and we've got to get to, next slide. Intersectionality. Uh, it doesn't make any sense to talk about any of these concepts or labels without explaining how they interact with each other. The experiences of an African-American man are obviously different than a white man, and a white man's experience is obviously different than a white woman's. And so how do these labels intersect and inform each other? And that's what, uh, I'd like to finish the semester with, to show the students just the complexity of this discussion. And if they can leave the class with an appreciation of that, that complexity, then I think I've achieved my aims. Uh, there's two long-term assignments that I want to let you folks know about, uh, next slide. Uh, the first summative assessment is something called Project Vision, where students have to select a sector of society, um, say, the tech sector or retail, or an institution like education, and re-envision it such that this class would no longer be necessary. The second thing that I do is I borrow an assignment from one of my colleagues, Athena Couch, uh, the Cultural Portfolio. the cultural portfolio in which students reflect upon their own labels. How do their, how does their race, their gender, their class inform and gets informed by society at large so that they have that interpersonal connection? And that's the state of the cluster and the class at the moment. We can open up the remainder of our time for questions.
I, I just want to tell you how impressed I am with the book choices. The Fair Act and diversifying narrative and including reading material where the students can see themselves. I, when I looked at this, I was just so impressed by the choices in the assignments. And I just want to thank you. I think it's great. I'm really, I love the choices because it, it's just not the same old dead white guys, and I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Wow, this cluster has changed a lot multiple times since I was at Casa and I, my, my one regret from Casa was not taking this cluster. So you may, you may find me auditing your course.
You're welcome, welcome to come in at any time, all of you, but it's, it's a new cluster. It really is.
What you described is completely different from my, from my educational experience in wonderful ways. So I applaud you all for putting this together. It looks fantastic. I do have a question. So does a student commit to a cluster for all these courses? Or do they come in and out as they can with their schedule? Or how does that work?
Um, so students, you know, when they're selecting courses, hopefully get, get to be in the cluster that they first select. So they do have a choice, but obviously depending on scheduling, you know, not everyone ends up exactly where they are. So it kind of varies. And then anything to add to that, Kiri and Todd?
Yeah. So normally you would sign up, the vast majority of the kids would have their English and history within the cluster, unless they have AP or a college course. And then sometimes, like Sarah said, scheduling doesn't allow it. So they may have me for Gov and Econ, but not Sarah for English. But vast majority are within this system. So we get, all the teachers get to really talk about the kids and get to know the kids really well.
And then they would be expected to take one of the electives associated with the cluster, the new media class or, or the race class and gender at the moment. And those, the cluster students would have a higher priority if there were ever a question of overcapacity.
I have a question about like what kind of issues have come up in the classes, like with, like BIPOC students, LGBTQ plus students? Like what types of issues have come up for them?
Um, I'm not sure. I know this was an election year, so I'm, I'm pretty sure Kiri has, has definitely had some of that come up more. I will say that I can echo what some of my colleagues have said that regardless of whatever issue has come up, they've handled it in a really diplomatic kind of open ears and open-minded way. I definitely think, you know, we did some reflection upon the events of January 6th. And there was definitely a lot of commentary about how different it looks, especially for our students of color, how differently that, that event was treated, right? And so we kind of had to hold space and grapple with the reality of what that looked like, especially after they've all lived through a summer of, you know, really intense intense events. So I think that that, that was one issue where we really had to hold space and talk about what we're seeing with what happened at the Capitol and, and kind of allow them a place to reflect on how it felt and what it looked like. Do my colleagues have anything they want to add?
We just had a discussion that was from, in my race class and gender, the sled. A student selected an article about, I hadn't heard about this, about a freshman girl at a school in Virginia who used the N-word in a social media post. Then later came to support Black Lives Matter. When she applied to the University of Tennessee, she was denied admission because people came forward and revealed this social media post that she made when she was 14. She wanted to be a cheerleader and they, they denied it completely. And it caused extremely respectful, but a very powerful discussion about the idea of redemption. What should be done to call out racist behavior? What is freedom of speech? And even the discussion turned to the concept of performative acts. It was wonderful because I got to learn so much more about what students today understand and use as language daily. I'm just so glad that we were able to, as a school support and the board, to approve the courses necessary to have these discussions.
Yeah, and just one slight, like more thing. Yeah, discussing a lot of the current events and their opinions and their feelings and everything. The article about undocumented workers not receiving, in the meatpacking industry in Nebraska, not receiving the vaccine, was actually brought to me by a student. So we created a whole discussion and lesson off of that. And then actually on the agenda to discuss tomorrow is Biden's decision to lift the transgender ban President Trump had placed on for the military and talk about history of that and have a class discussion based off of that.
So several of us attended, go ahead, like this great series about focused on black voices and Latinx voices, indigenous that are, and so, and we did, they did have some students from Casa and some of our other schools sharing, sharing their experiences. And I was just blown away that the same awful experiences that I had in the 90s in high school that unfortunately our kids are having still today. So I just wonder, like, in terms of you, I mean, I don't know your background, you're all white appearing. So like for the students, like, how is it for, have any of them shared any feedback about how it is to be taught by you? If they haven't, that's fine, too. I'm just wondering.
No, it hasn't come up in my classes. But I've certainly raised it because, you know, for a white male to teach a race class and gender course, at least at the elective level, is very challenging. And so that's why I've really emphasized the sled concept, that I emphasize from day one that I want the students to own the class as much as possible. And where possible, if appropriate, I try to bring in the perspective that I'm still learning, I'm still growing. And that I and many other people will make mistakes, both in action and language especially, so that nobody should feel unable to discuss difficult topics. I don't want anyone to feel like, oh, I can't have my voice heard. Interestingly enough, I would suggest that the students that feel that they don't seem to have a voice are the ones that talk a lot in other classes.
And also, yes, no one has brought up that. But it is something, and I'm glad you brought up because it does, it's something I think about all the time. I have had positive feedback from students who felt very excited to be represented and have a larger stage and voice and a larger perspective on the story of America. But yes, like Todd said, a lot of student-driven and giving them a place to have their voice is, is how I, I try to help as best as possible as well.
Yeah, and I'll echo that. I think it is a really important point, and especially when we started reading How to Be an Anti-Racist, those chapters, like, you know, acknowledging that these are difficult subjects to discuss and that certainly I am not an expert and that's not my experience as a white woman. So kind of understanding that hopefully by bringing voices that are experts, not only in the experience, but in the study of these really complex issues that hopefully that's, that's creating a space itself. And I have, I mean, I kind of can echo, I have had positive interactions with students, but you know, it's an important point to bring up and to perhaps pose to our students, you know?
I just, sorry, also, I've had several cases of, you know, a handful of kids telling the class, sharing their experiences of racism that they have experienced at Casa in the community. And I think that has been the most impactful for the students to hear that because some of them are oblivious to it.
Thank you.
I only want to say hello and you make me cry. And I am so the richness of the curriculum. And I was just wondering how you, how you get through everything. Have you, have you, you know, just kind of, I mean, especially your first year, I'm sure you're experimenting with a lot, but I was just wondering, I mean, it just is so rich, so varied and diverse and, but right on point. I'm just, it's just, everything about it is, makes my heart warm. And I can't, I taught with all these people, so I want, I miss teaching. Listening to your enthusiasm and love for what you're doing just says so much about who you are and about who teachers are, and especially even in a pandemic, that you can be, do something this good. So.
And the enthusiasm is, thank you, incredible. I know it's really hard during, I mean, I was an English teacher for a million years and I'm just, like I said before, I'm just really impressed. I just love the material, the literature and nonfiction choices. And, you know, I think this is something that our district really needs, this kind of class and conversation.
Yeah, that's a lot of material. I was surprised, too, that it was only a semester. I thought for sure when Dan sent us the slides that it was a year-long. One more question. So did you have any PD to prepare for this? And if not, would you want any? Look, this is your time. Ask Chris for money. Go.
PD for teaching this particular curriculum, no. But PD for, you know, say, cultural awareness in terms of bilingual students, yes, definitely. And would I want some? Yes, absolutely.
Um, yeah, I've, I've sought my own PD for sure. And always, I think this, especially around these subjects for the district would be amazing and helpful.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I want to pop in here just for another moment and just thank you to my colleagues and commend them for their incredible work here, their dedication, their bravery to, to commit to this curriculum and this, this journey and to make space for our students. And to thank you, Board, for the opportunity again. And again, please come on by. Let's, let's enjoy some classes together and participate with the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now comments from the public on non-agendized items. I cannot believe I skipped over all that good stuff. Okay. So before we open the chat, I'm going to read our board policy on public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or 20-minute limit per subject matter. So we're going to open the chat for a couple of minutes and go ahead and put your, if you have a comment on something on the agenda, please put it in the chat and include your first and last name, please.
So if it's the, in this next piece, we'll, we'll just be pulling the actual items that are going to be for the non-agenda. If we do have a item that's a 12.1.2, which is about reopening class, school, schools to in-person, if you put a comment in on that, you can either wait. If it's in here, we, we won't take it at this time. We'll move it down in the order. So this is a time specifically for public comment on items that you do not see on the agenda. There is a, there is an agendized item, again, that's 12.1.2 on reopening. And you'll have an opportunity in a moment to also put your name into the chat box.
You don't have to put your full comment in. If you did, that's fine, but just go ahead and put your, your, your name, your full first and last name and like Gary said, we'll talk about agenda item 12.1 later on.
It's, it's not clear on some of them what, whether you, what you are actually going to speak on. So if, if you just placed your name, you need to let us know what the subject item is so that we can determine where to put you in the order. So Hannah, you'll need to do that. Just kind of going through them. Sarah, the same. And Carlos will need your, we need to know what item you're going to speak to. So we'll give Carlos a chance to put his in and then we'll. So Ashley, if you want to close the non-agendized items. Madam President, let's see, let's go to the top. It would be Connie Williams wants to speak on Lumicon.
Hi, this is Connie. Can you hear me? Excellent, excellent. I, this is my favorite time to come to the board and say, welcome to the new year. And one of the newest and most wonderful things that we do every year, collaboration between the Public Library in Petaluma and Casa Grande and Petaluma High is Lumicon. And just because we have a shelter in place and stay-at-home orders, Lumicon is still happening this year. It's virtual. And the librarians have gone over and above in making the most incredible all-day experience for you and your families. And I want to invite you and ask you to, please feel free to invite and share with anyone else that Lumicon is happening. You can get the full schedule at lumicon.net. And if you want to, you can follow them on Instagram at petta underscore Lumicon. And that will get you into many of the activities that are happening all day. The Schultz Museum, we have Artist's Alley, we have cosplays, we have the most fun things going on. And I think you and your families will enjoy it. So that's it's the Saturday, starts at night, this Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock. But do go look at the schedule and activities all throughout the whole day. But do go look at the schedule and activities all throughout the whole day.
Next one to open up would be Sarah Seichik Sebastian. She's going to, Sarah's going to speak on student input, community-wide efforts.
And I forgot to ask earlier, do you want me to do the timer?
We'll do the timer when we get to the action items. I don't think we have it. We don't have anybody here that exceeds the time limit.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Am I, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, wonderful. Thank you, everyone. And I hope you're having a good evening. Welcome to the rain. I wanted to check in with you all and thank you for the American Voices Cluster. Everything that we heard there seemed to be a wonderful step in a new direction. It sounded like classes that I took in the beginning of college, so I was happy to hear that. I have a couple of questions in regards to that. The first one being, I would love to hear a presentation of the students who took that cluster and what their experiences were and kind of to echo Joanna's questions in regards to how their experience were both with the information, the syllabus, the curriculum and the teachers and what they would like to see more of. I think it's really important to get that feedback. The other question that I have is, this last Thursday, we had a large meeting with the city council in regards to race relations in the police. And many of the nearly 200 participants that were at that city council meeting, which was a crazy amount of people, talked about their experiences in schools and how racial injustice and harassment happens both in the schools as well as in the community. And one of the things that came to mind is that we really need to find a common sense or common ground or a common sense framework with which our entire community can get together and agree upon on how we interact with one another in the public space. And the three main public domains that we have are public education, the city council, and the police. And so my question is, how can we and how can the administration, how can the superintendents, the principals, the board interact with the city? And I know that we don't very much, very often. I know that we have conversations about parks and how do we share that kind of thing? And sometimes whether or not police have been on campus in the past. But how can we move forward and have these different pillars of our leadership in our public spaces work together to form perhaps a committee or a conversation with a common vision with which we can move forward to dismantle harassment, racism, you know, misogyny, patriarchy, blah, blah, blah. So I'm curious as to what your thoughts are about that. I know it's non-agendized, but I'd really love to start seeing how we can move together within the different departments. So thank you very much, and I really appreciate all of your work.
We have a non-agendized item. I'm not sure what it is. Carlos Salazar.
Well, I'm trying to find, okay.
All right. Hey, I appreciate you guys giving me a second. First of all, this is the first time I've actually attended a school board meeting, so I'm glad to be here. I did want to point out that on the initial slide where you were saying, please wait a moment, where you guys had it in Spanish and in English, there's actually a typo in the Spanish. So just something for you guys to look at and take care of. You know, the other piece, and this is kind of a community thing, I'd like to get your guys' opinion on. You know, we talk about inclusion. You know, the previous caller was talking about us having a form for us to speak together. I've spent the last 24 hours or so defending my wife from an organization that a couple of you guys are pretty heavily a part of, where she was accused of being, let me get this right, a white supremacist with terrorist ties. And she is a parent of two students in Petaluma City School. She is a very often volunteer at my kid's school. And I'd like to know, I mean, how do you guys suppose that we as a community come together and don't immediately go to name-calling when it comes to, you know, a difference of opinion or a difference of of belief on something versus just immediately race, you know, labeling somebody a white supremacist and trying to drive them out of the community? Thoughts? Gary?
So Carlos, there isn't, for non-agendized items, the board can't speak and carry on a conversation on any non-agendized items.
Understood. So is there a format to get this on the agenda for the next meeting? Is that, can I find that on the website?
You can reach out to my office and we can walk you through the process of how we go about setting up our agendas, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure this is the the forum for that for that conversation, but we'd have to have a sidebar conversation.
Respectfully, I disagree. I think the people representing our schools being heavily touted as part of what I would consider a hate group is something that we should be talking about here. And we should be talking about it in front of everybody, in front of our students, in front of our families and in front of everyone on the board. But I understand that you guys can't respond and I will reach out directly to your office.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The next we have, I will, let's go to Sal Andropoulos.
Hello. Oh, yeah, I think I was made a panelist accidentally, maybe. This is Sal Andropoulos, they then pronouns. Just quickly wanted to say, it's great to hear about the the American Voices Cluster, the presentation that we just heard. That sounds like some really great coursework and just kind of echoing sort of what Sarah and Joanna were saying, it'd be great to hear some more about the experiences of, you know, BIPOC and LGBTQ+ students in those classes and similarly or kind of relatedly, just wanted to ask if we could hear an update at some point about maybe the status of, you know, curriculum or classes of that nature at other campuses in addition to CASA? And also, you know, just whether and just the, I guess, status of making, you know, things like, you know, ethnic studies or Fair Act coursework, you know, you know, requirements rather than than electives at, yeah, some of the other campuses. So possibly at a future time, I know there's a Fair Act update coming up in March, I think. But yeah, thank you for that presentation.
We have Alexis De La Torre. Student mental health.
Yes, I'm Alexis De La Torre. I'm a sophomore at the Petaluma High School. And the main issue I wanted to bring up was sort of the mental health of students. Because I've felt that a lot of my peers during, since we've gotten into distance learning, we there, there's been a decline in their mental health because of all the isolation and that. And I felt like in some of the emails the district sends out, the the solutions aren't that viable for them. Good, like one thing I've heard a lot is that, speaking with counselors, but I know a lot of my peers don't trust counselors. But where where this statement on mental health and how it's declining within our student body brings me to another point, which is like increasing radicalism online, because I know that radicalism radicalism online, it seeks to affect people that are weaker and like, and, you know, this, of course, this pandemic has made a lot of our student body a bit mentally weaker because of all the isolation. And so, so one example of radicalization, radicalization, radicalization online that I have is that the other day I was scrolling mindlessly through TikTok, like something that a lot of people my age do. And from from one recipe video to the next, I was watching literal fascist propaganda, where it was saying that, oh, Hitler wasn't a fascist, he was a national socialist. And Mussolini was actually a very good guy. And I was just sort of amazed. I spoke up and I was like, no, this isn't right. I commented on the video and I was amazed by how many people sort of just sort of went against me. They called me a race traitor and things like that. And so what I'm seeing with that is that I'm scared with with the students again because of how, how like, how prevalent things like that are online and how this this sort of pandemic has made us more vulnerable to things like that. That's all.
Okay, that is, that concludes our comments.
I see one from Nicole about inclusivity and diversity. So I don't know if that's on a later item, but that sounds.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
I don't know if she was going to talk about something now or.
No, she, 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 she came down down later and specified 12.1. So the last one is Nicole Marzo. Sandra, if I'm wrong.
Hi again. Could someone let me know the name of the young man who brilliantly spoke a few moments ago? What was his name?
Alexis.
Alexis, I just want to let you know, I thought like your points were really meaningful. So my, I kind of had some thoughts. I'm not a really great public speaker, so bear with me here for a second. Inclusivity and diversity are really important in public education. There are some people who have fear about speaking out at these board meetings for fear of retaliation. And it happened to me last fall. We were all here when I got called out by a trustee for trashing trustees. And I really never did that. But that wasn't why I wanted to bring this up. I wanted to bring it up because fear does not prohibits our district from being diverse and inclusive, right? And so I was hoping that, you know, maybe if we do a survey, that question in a roundabout way could be asked. Do parents and students feel fear of talking about what's really on their mind for fear because of retaliation? And I'm trying to be calm in my tone and not sound angry or not sound anything but an invested partner in public education, right? For for diversity and inclusivity. And the other thing that is part of where I go with this is that the young man, and I'm so sorry, I'm nervous, so I Alexis, I think, or Alexi, he spoke about people being isolated and then they get off into these weird chat rooms. I think that's a strong argument to work really hard to get face-to-face with kids and on campus. So the socialization part of their lives so that we can continue to meaningfully impact their lives so they don't go down these conspiracy theories or or whatever. But that we actually can meaningfully impact them on racism and diversity and inclusion. Because when they're sitting at home on their computers, they're checking out. Just my two cents. Thank you so much for your time.
I think that was the end of public comments. Did I miss anyone, Gary?
I think so.
Okay. All right. So report on activities and correspondence of the school board members. Somehow we were able to do a lot in the last two weeks, even on Zoom. Budget Perspectives Workshop, Governor's Budget 2021 by Capital Advisors Group, the path for reopening schools, early research in the current California landscape. SCO Budget Workshops, SCO Board Member Orientation, PCS Budget Committee Meeting, PCS LCAT Meeting, Circle Up Training, Circle Ups Circles at Cherry Valley, Sonoma County Black Forum, CHIPPA, City Council Special Meeting on Race and Policing in Petaluma, Conversations on Teachers Unions and Social Justice hosted by Rethinking Schools, Anti-Racism Speaker Series. So that's great. All right, moving on to approval of consent agenda by consolidating motion. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
A second.
All right. Sorry, that was my timer. That was still going. Okay, so any comments on the consent agenda?
Just, I can't believe how many books that we're that are, we're making obsolete are older than me. Like they, those books have put in their time.
I noticed that as well. Anyone else?
No, surprisingly.
Sheldon, anything?
I'm good. So we got a vote on it.
Sorry, I was muted. You can think I know now to unmute myself. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to discussion information-only items, Ed Services. Oh, I skipped something again. I'm so sorry. Look at you guys helping me out. Thank you. Comments from the public on discussion and information items.
Action items.
Oh, my. I'm sorry, you guys.
You're right.
That's why I should have printed it out ahead of time. All right, comments from the public on action items.
So you're going to want to read your, your, reiterate the time, how do you want it, how do you want it organized that?
Um, I will just reiterate that we cannot comment on these items. And please put the topic in the chat along with your first and last name if you have any comments on these action items.
How much time do you want for the 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 one for any single action item?
We'll give them the four minutes.
Okay. Okay. But do you have a total amount of time? Or do you want it just four minutes? Because you've got a 20-minute, the board, the board, your board policy says 20 minutes of time. You could extend that time and then depending on how many people sign in when we open this chat box, we'll divide that. We will divide that number accordingly. And we already have one, two, three, four, five, six that that will be speaking on the second item. I'm sure we'll have more once we open up the chat box. So.
So we already have six. Um, let's, I do want to hear from everyone, though. So let's say two minutes per person.
If we go over the 20 minutes?
Over 10, yeah.
And the 20, okay. So what's going to happen on the chat box is if we go over, if we have more than 10 people speaking, then we will limit the speakers to two minutes. So you'll need to be concise on your information. Ashley, what you will be doing is, I don't, I do not want to throw a timer up. It's already hard enough for folks, but when they get to two, two minutes, give them a 15-second kind of a wrap it up and then
timer as well.
We'll ask folks to, we'll ask folks to wrap it up, you know, within that 15 seconds.
Sounds good.
So right now, right now, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay. While they're. While they're doing that, we have a we do have one comment, and I don't care to speak, but my comment is to reopen in-person learning or hybrid.
There any comments for the first resolution?
Doesn't seem to be anything about the school board at this current. But I think we can, we can close the chat box.
Okay.
So we could probably like, you know, it it, you know, at in in that this case, we could get it's two, two and a half minutes.
Okay. We have nine.
Yeah. So we'll start at the very top with who, what, yeah. As we'll go down the list and we're gonna and we'll start with Melissa.
I don't think Melissa Marazan is here anymore.
So I will go ahead and read hers because it's just, what are you doing to assure schools reopen for in-person instruction once teachers are vaccinated? Why are teachers saying that they are not going to go back once they are, once they're vaccinated? Okay. Susan Smith is is next.
Is that Susan Smith under Ms. Smith?
There, it's, I believe it's the same individual.
Okay, so yeah, I'm Susan Smith. I'm Ms. Smith. I teach uh science and chemistry at Petaluma High School. My comment is that we, I think it would be wise to add in a timing contingency to the return to hybrid mode. For instance, in the further resolution three, it could read at the beginning, you already have it reading. Seventh grade through twelfth grade, students would shift to a hybrid instructional model no more than six weeks following Sonoma County being placed in red tier status. I would think it'd be wise to add unless that shift happens in the final four weeks of the semester, in which case distance learning would be used until the end of semester. Expecting students to transition from distance to classroom and almost instantly into final exams could be disastrous. So I would, I would appreciate consideration of that amendment. Thank you.
So our next one is Maya A, and I don't know if if she wanted to to just read this. And so I believe it's just is just because it's written out. So I will read it. If she would like to add to that. Ashley, you can open it up. Says what opportunities are there to revise?
I can go ahead and read it. Bye. Um hi, I'm Maya. I am a parent of an eighth grader at Kennelworth. This is my first time attending a board meeting. It's kind of unfortunate circumstances and hopefully I can be more involved going forward. But what I would like to know is what opportunities there are to revise the current resolution to get our children and teachers safely back to school as soon as possible. Marin County has been back in school for months without vaccinations being available. Santa Rosa released a detailed plan for returning to school. And now today, the CDC released a recommendation that children should go back to school. So what I would like to know as a parent, and I know I speak for many others, is when will the Petaluma City Schools have a detailed plan in place so we can understand what that learning will look like for our children? Not just, oh, once we get to the red tier and then four weeks or six weeks. I don't understand that four to six week period. It seems like there should be a plan in place now before we even get to that red tier so that there's no need for those four to six weeks. And it seems like this board has had a long time to to work on that detailed plan. And we just haven't heard any additional information on on those details beyond at what point we might get to a a place where our kids can go back to school. And so I just don't see this being seen as a priority, you know, for this board. And it should be, you know, up front and center, and it should be pretty much every meeting until we get there for these kids. At this point, it seems far fetched that our children will go back to school this school year, which is really sad. But I I'd just like to voice my concern that it seems like we are far behind in progress. We are not leaders. We are not being progressive here in our community. And, you know, I hope that it it since it won't happen in this meeting and understanding that you don't speak to any of these comments now, that you will address this in the next meeting and that that meeting will happen as soon as possible so that we as parents in the community can get some more answers. And I will go ahead and follow up as well via email to any members where I can get your email address and hope to get a response in writing from you since I will not be able to get any direct response from you during this meeting. Thank you for your time. I did learn some wonderful things about Casa Grande where my son will be a student next year. I'm really excited about that coursework on diversity. And I appreciate all the hard work. I just want to see more hard work on getting our kids back to school.
Maya, this is an agendized item, so we are going to be discussing this.
Great. We just can't respond directly necessarily and make every public comment a conversation, if that makes sense.
Great. Looking forward to hearing that. I wish it would been be at the beginning so I didn't have to sit through so much, but looking forward to hearing that.
Yeah, we first initial last name at pet K twelve dot org.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, do we have Hannah? Is Hannah Rizzo next?
Uh yes.
Hi, yeah, I'm also a mother of a student at Petaluma City Schools. He's in second grade and just hoping that we have a, the board has a plan submitted to the county ahead of being in the twenty-five per a hundred thousand so we can get the ball rolling once, you know, we're able to be in person. So it's not another, oh, we're dragging our feet. We have another six weeks before we get this plan in place and then it's summer break. Like the caller said before me, Marin's been in school for months. Many other places have been in school since the fall. Our kids are suffering. And I know everyone's doing the best they can, but it's, it's getting hard and long. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um looks like we have Brett Goldstein next.
Hello? Could you hear me? Oh, great. Thank you. So I have two children, similar to many of the other callers in front of me in the PCS system, a second grader and a fourth grader. I've been quite active working through PCS and the educational infrastructure over my multiple years here in Petaluma. I've been on the LCAP uh committee for a number of years now consecutively. I participate in a site council to school. I participate actively in the school in classes within the Bay Area. I've coached teams out in Mission Bay that my kids don't participate in, part of the Boys and Girls Club. And I I have a great passion about helping our children and making sure our school system is the best it can be. My experience for anyone that doesn't know what LCAP is, there's a committee that is staffed by our administration. I think Gavin and Cliff and Gary do an excellent job as well as the board who participate. But I think over the past few years, our marks have been quite strong as an entire school system. And I think even on our last meeting, the ability to really measure what's happening in schools was sort of characterized by Alexis Delatorre's very sensitive comments. The mental health is declining by not being in school. And I I, for me, if I was part of this group here on the administration, I think the only thing I would be focusing on as a priority right now is getting our kids back in school to focus on improving the mental health, improving the performance of our children in class. I feel like right now, trying to improve our curriculum is sort of like fixing tires on a car that doesn't drive anymore. And I know everyone's doing their best, but I speak to many parents in the community, dozens to many dozens. And I think one or two of those are people who do not support kids being back in school yesterday. And maybe those are single parents who can't afford if they get sick because they work and they're home taking care of their kids. They have no other options. But I think ninety-eight percent of the many dozens of parents I speak with all want their kids back in school in a safe environment for teachers, for students, but as soon as possible.
Right, you have about thirty seconds.
Perfect. Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. So so the last piece I would just to use my time is, I I personally would say I I would like to participate in the process, help with the administration, make sure there's a plan in place. I've and I just want to thank you all for your time. I hope it continues to be not only a top priority, but the number one priority of the board.
Thank you. Um, next up is Ms. Sandra Larson.
You can hear me?
Go ahead, Sandra.
This first thing, this is the last meeting in January, and I was thinking the last time we were beginning, last year, we are beginning to learn that there are confirmed COVID cases in the United States. We were learning that COVID was spreading around the world at the same time we are going on with our lives. My husband and I were planning a spring and a summer vacation. School board meetings were taking place in the district office, and not many of us had any experience with Zoom. How many of us had a collection of face masks? We never imagined how the world was going to change in two months. It was clear by March that we were in a worldwide pandemic. Safety guidelines were changing rapidly as scientists worked to learn how COVID nineteen was transmitted as well as to develop tests and treatments for patients. The state ordered our first lockdown and we transitioned into distance learning. PFT leadership began meeting with the district administration in March. We worked together to adapt to the demands of distance learning. Committees that began in the spring worked through the summer to develop plans for students to return to in-person learning. Committees continued to meet this year. There has not been a single instance since the beginning of this pandemic that the Federation and the district have not worked together to reach an agreement to make necessary changes or improvements needed to provide the best possible possible education for our students while ensuring staff safety. We will continue to negotiate MOUs with the district as the need arises. Once we have a signed MOU, it'll be posted on the district website. We will not be discussing on ongoing negotiations in this public forum. It may come as a surprise to you, but I have not always agreed with every decision this board has made. And I know it's gonna shock shock Gary, but we haven't always seen eye to eye either. I know that is news to everyone. All that seems so unimportant now. COVID nineteen demanded we put aside past issues and focus on what's important, our students and our health. We could not have achieved our current strong working relationship with the district without clear and consistent leadership from the board. Your directives and resolutions drove our committee work. We've appreciated having a strong board that supports students, their families and staff. We want to thank Gary for his leadership during this time and well as well. In addition, we have achieved a great deal working with Matthew, Cliff, Liz, Chris, Jason, Melinda and Molly. They're a strong leadership team. Tonight, the board is voting on a resolution that will give clear guidance for returning to in-person learning. We are grateful that the board
Sandra, about, I'm gonna give you twenty more seconds.
I'll go. We are grateful that the board understands the importance of giving staff members the opportunity to be vaccinated as well as following safety guidelines that the state says we should be in the red category before we return to in-person learning. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Molly Dickens.
Thank you. Um hi. So I I want to echo what the other parents who already spoke had said. Um I have a TK student and a first grader. And honestly, with this resolution, I feel a little let down by this board as a parent. This resolution appears to be based on the old requirements and recommendations that were set forth with the tier system and and not at all acknowledge what was brought up in December by Gavin Newsom when he emphasized the importance of getting children back in schools, especially the youngest children, saying that they should be back by next month. And this is different from what was said by this honestly flawed tier system. And so where is this incorporated into the resolution? And was this even considered in the revolution, that resolution? Is there any flexibility with this resolution? And I'm concerned because the planning around entering into the red tier, honestly, personally, I'm a scientist. I really don't think it should apply to the, especially the younger ages. And this is was noted by our governor in his announcement in December. For the red tier, just, I'm I'm sure everybody already knows this, but just to kind of go through it, the adjusted case rate must fall below seven out of a hundred thousand residents. It's honestly insane to apply to elementary school kids, especially that the science continues to show that the child to adult transmission is negligible, including in a school environment. The new recommendation suggests opening schools at a two-week average of an adjusted case rate of twenty-eight to a hundred thousand residents. As of today, Sonoma County is at thirty-two and our case rate is currently decreasing. So we could hit twenty-eight out of a hundred thousand in the next couple of weeks. And so as another parent pointed out, there are other schools that are open across the country. There's schools open across the barrier. There's private schools that are open that they're in areas with higher levels of community spread. There are plenty of examples of children interacting with teachers and staff in a school environment, and there are zero scientifically demonstrated outbreaks of COVID in schools. In fact, quite the opposite, there was a new study that was published, and I can send this to everyone on the school board if this would help. A new study published in the Journal for the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Molly, you have about
Wrapping up.
Seconds left.
Okay, br- almost done. This new study showed that out of eleven schools in North Carolina, a hundred thousand school students and staff, zero evidence of child to adult community spread, zero. So as a parent, I fully accept the minimal risk that my child will catch COVID from an adult in their classroom. And I think it's time we accept the negligible risk that my children pose to those same adults. And I really would like to see a better plan that looks towards the new recommendations that came out recently.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. Next up is Nicole. W E H R. I think that's, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your name right, W E H R.
Hello. So I'm gonna read a letter that I sent to a few of you. Dear Board Members, a genuine thank you to Board Member Sheldon Jen for asking some very important questions during the last district board meeting on January twelfth about reopening in-person special special education cohorts. My child is in first grade and he is in a small special day class at Meadow School in the South County Consortium. In his class, there are six students, one credential teacher, two full-time aides and several other staff, which include a program manager, an OT, a speech language pathologist, a PT, an APE teacher. Our school has been closed since March. Our son is a student with moderate to severe disabilities who has an IEP. Since August, he has received thirty minutes of Zoom instruction per day. He has received materials every two weeks. The minimal amount that he is receiving does not even begin to meet his needs. He has regressed. Our special needs son requires in-person learning to meet his IEP goals. He needs to be in the classroom to learn and make progress socially, academically, and with his speech, occupational and physical therapists. As a student on the autism spectrum, he requires social cues and physical engagement which are not possible through the computer screen. Zoom teaching is not enough to support our son's academic and social and emotional growth.
Nicole, you have thirty seconds, but I'm going to allow you to finish reading, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It is especially challenging for us because my other child is in kindergarten and he also requires support and supervision for distance learning. He no longer loves school. He feels disconnected from his peers. We feel that children in this age group need in-person learning to truly thrive and learn. They are too young to understand the content in a meaningful way as presented in the limited distance learning setting of a computer screen. Both of our boys struggle to focus and engage in distance learning without constant adult supervision. This has caused stress for our family. This has been an additional burden for us as we have been forced to use the majority of our respite and ABA hours to support our boys with distance learning. instead of working on crucial life skills. They are working on keeping one or both of them from running away from the screen. Financially, we're paying out of pocket several hundred dollars per month for the additional hours of support they both need for distance learning. We feel that they are losing progress at the moment, at the most important time in their development. We feel frustrated and disappointed that a school reopening is not yet planned for this vulnerable population of kids, those who need to be at school to make real progress on their IEP goals, as well as supporting their social, emotional, and communication development by being with their peers. We are new to the school, and we feel isolated in the distance learning environment. We would have appreciated consistent communication from the specialists who are part of our son's IEP team. Missing individualized services for PT, speech, and OT has impacted his progress in these areas of need so profound for a child with autism. In closing, we urge you to bring these kids, these at-risk kids, back soon. The longer we stay in the distance learning model, the further behind these kids will get. Now that Governor Newsom has lifted the shelter-in-place order, it's time to get these kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Phoebe Ellis.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yep, go ahead, Phoebe.
Hi, everyone. So I just prepared a few notes for tonight because sometimes I get distracted. But thank you all again for being here tonight. And I just wanted to start by saying I do wake up most nights, as it sounds like most of these other parents who are, we're listening to tonight with much anxiety, wondering if we are meeting the academic and emotional needs of all PCS children. And after much discussion with parents, students, teachers, staff, administration, reading articles, listening to podcasts, talking to mental health and medical professionals, I think we can all agree that the answer is clearly no. Let's stop discussing how hard people have been working to develop this distance learning model, the challenges that the district has faced to come up with hybrid and sanitizing schedules. Let's minimize the reminders about the Stop It! bullying app, and let's start to send some positive messaging and hope and connection to our school communities, which we all need desperately right now. As I read daily articles about how students are suffering, watch my own child and his friends suffer, talk to parents, listen tonight about how their children are suffering, I ask myself and you, the PCS board and administration, why are we all not supporting the movement loudly and boldly to reopen our schools when allowed by regulations? We can all agree that the teachers and staff and families and our precious students have all rallied to embrace distance learning, and it's wonderful to know that we have mastered the system for moving forward for emergency missing class days. But at this point, distance learning is not effective. Whether it's Zoom fatigue, technology issues, empathy, boredom, isolation, depression, addiction, distance learning is not effective. Families, students, teachers, staff, all have their own stories to share about what has gone on for the past eleven months, and it's time to move ahead and return to the classroom so that the students can resume learning, engaging, and developing. It seems absurd that we are begging for what is a constitutional right. Our children have the right to a free and public education, and the Constitution requires that all children may be given an equal educational opportunity, no matter what their race, ethnic background, religion, sex, or whether they are rich or poor, citizens or non-citizens.
You have about fifteen seconds, Phoebe. I'll give you thirty to finish.
Thank you. I've yet to hear anyone champion this cause. The California Department of Public Health published guidelines back in August of 2020, and they have not changed. Why are we eleven months later seeing the first time of a resolution to initiate hybrid learning? And why is there a waiting period included in the hybrid learning resolution tonight? Hopefully, you're all aware, as of January fourteenth, twenty-one, elementary schools can reopen in the purple tier if their county caseload is below twenty-five cases for a hundred thousand. Currently, as someone mentioned earlier tonight, we're at thirty-one. So my guess is we're going to get to that level in the next couple of weeks. So why-
Thank you, Phoebe.
Why is there a four to six week waiting period? So hopefully, you guys can address that tonight in your resolution. Thank you very much, and let's work hard to get the students back in the classroom.
Thank you.
Joanna, I have a question for you. There is a resolution before this, the return to school resolution. I would like to swap that.
I'll move to table the former resolution until we've discussed and voted on the latter. If I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor of tabling the first and moving it until after twelve point one-two?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed?
I think that makes sense.
Are we gonna, are we gonna start talking about the resolution, or are there more?
So we do, we technically have to move to approve in second to get it on the table. So I don't want anyone to think that the people that are moving and seconding it necessarily aren't gonna. That doesn't mean that we're voting yes on it as is. So I move to approve. The weekend, the ball rolling.
I second.
Perfect.
Okay.
And so-
Go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Can, can somebody read it into the record?
Really long, man.
That's what we're supposed to do?
We're supposed to do it.
I'll, I'll read it.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. All right. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, resolution of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts of the County of Sonoma, State of California, on conditions required for instructional platform shift from distance learning to distance learning slash on-campus learning hybrid for both students and staff. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has severely impacted student access to on-campus instruction, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has severely impacted social and emotional development of students by limiting social interaction, including activities that are traditionally offered by schools, and whereas the interaction between students and staff and instructional learning environment is valued and necessary, and whereas on-campus instruction, extracurricular participation in co-curricular activities supports student social, emotional, and academic development, and whereas parents, PCS staff, and community groups are all eager to support movement towards a safe return to school operations, and whereas distance learning has disproportionately impacted the academic achievement of identifiable, of identifiable groups of students, including English-language learners and special education students, and whereas student achievement, as measured by academic grades, have been negatively impacted during each grading period, and whereas any successful hybrid delivery of instruction during the pandemic is contingent upon physical and behavioral adjustments at schools, including maintaining spacing between all individuals, wearing masks, cohorting students, frequent cleaning of shared spaces and materials, and responsive virus testing and contact tracing. And whereas the smooth implementation of a hybrid delivery of instruction is facilitated by a phased return of students to on-campus instruction, and whereas even then, some families will opt to remain in distance learning during the pandemic. Now, therefore be it resolved that Petaluma City Schools will utilize the following conditions as the criteria used to determine when PCS schools will make the instructional platform shift from distance learning to distance learning slash on-campus learning hybrid. One, Sonoma County is identified as a red-tier county as established under the blueprint for a safer economy. That can be found at covid19.ca.gov/safereconomy. And two, Petaluma City School staff have had access and opportunity to receive a Food and Drug Administration-approved COVID vaccine, COVID-19 vaccination series. And be it further resolved that Petaluma City Schools would strive to implement the following reopening sequence if conditions one and two listed above have been met. One, transitional kindergarten through second grade, grades TK, K one and two. Students and identified students with moderate to severe disabilities in pre-identified special education classes would shift to the hybrid instructional model no more than four weeks following Sonoma County being placed in red-tier status. Two, third through sixth grade, grades three, four, five, and six. Students would shift to the hybrid instructional model no more than four weeks following Sonoma County being placed in red-tier status. Three, seventh grade through twelfth grade, grades seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Students would shift to the hybrid instructional model no more than six weeks following Sonoma County being placed in red-tier status. And be it further resolved that each sequence may involve a staggered start and is dependent on a number of operational circumstances. And be it further resolved that Petaluma City Schools will work with all critical stakeholders, including but not limited to the Petaluma Federation of Teachers, California School Employees Association, Petaluma City Schools administrators, and Petaluma City Schools families to plan and coordinate matters associated with an instructional platform shift. Okay. Now, Ellen, go ahead.
Well, first of all, reading in the different whereas is there was an extracurricular participant, participation in co-curricular activities. Months ago, we talked about bringing students back to schools for small, like little, for club meetings or whatever, and then we got in the shelter-in-place order. Well, that's been lifted, and I don't see anything in here. I don't, we don't have to wait till we're in the red tier to have these meet, to have these groups, and we've, we've- we've, can I finish? So I don't, I don't understand why this is part of that we gotta wait for vaccinations and red tier. The other issue I have is with special ed and second language learners. We also talked about wanting to bring them back as small cohorts and before, and we can do that while we're in the purple tier, and I don't see that language anywhere. I also have a big problem with if we're prepared, we should, we should be, and we have to be in red tier for two weeks. Once we hit the red tier, that'll give us two weeks to firm up our planning. I don't see why we need four or six weeks to stagger it, so.
There's no, no more than four.
I understand that, but to me, it should be no more than three. I don't know. It's there, it's just, I don't think that this resolution is written is serving the community and serving our students. And I, I need, I need to see more about bringing special ed cohorts back before, and I need to see more about the extracurricular activities on campus. I know some principals, I talked to Amy at Cherry Valley, she's got activities that she can, that she's already talked about bringing kids back in little groups. So that seems to be missing from this this resolution, that special, the, the special ed cohorts, I think, are crucial. And, you know, if we don't get out of the purple tier until March, and then we're gonna wait another four weeks, those, those special ed kids, that's way, way too long for them to wait. So that's my feedback, my input.
I'll let someone else speak before I do.
Do you want to go, Matty, or you want me to?
Um, you go ahead.
Well, just responding to Ellen a little bit. At our last meeting, I think, well, at least the conclusion that I came to based upon our discussion was that because the special ed kids aren't already clustered, and they have individualized needs, a cluster was logistically challenging, let's say, to bring them back beforehand. And so what I would propose is to clarify on the further resolve, number one, that we would clarify that the special ed, we're talking about the moderate to severe disabilities in pre-identified primary and secondary special education. And I would add to that list, I would propose to add to that list English-language learners in ELD courses.
I agree with that. My problem is making those kids who need it most wait until we're in the red tier. And yeah, you know, and look at some consortium, I mean, like that one parent was talking about, her kid's in a class with six other kids.
Yeah, and, and I also want to, I want to shout out to Caitlin, and I appreciate what, you know, the way that she phrased it earlier, you know, this is a document meant to be edited. I mean, because we aren't allowed to produce these things in groups bigger than two outside of a board meeting. And so I, I want to throw out there the idea of changing that first criterion under the first resolve, number one, changing it from Sonoma County is identified as a red-tier county to perhaps using the new, the new state guidelines saying once you reach twenty-five cases per one hundred thousand, then you can proceed. That's new state guidelines that came out literally, I think it was last week.
Last week.
Last.
That's an official motion. I second it.
Well, I have it all written out.
Is that, can I ask a clarifying question? Sheldon, are you saying that you want to amend that for, like, for the first one? Instead of saying red tier, twenty-five per one hundred thousand?
That's right.
Do you want me to read you by motion?
Actually, that's why I have one other, like, another clarifying. I'm turning to you, Matty, with all the questions. I'm just kidding. So that was the first one. And then on, are you saying also on the further be it resolved, you want to change that one from red as well to twenty-five per one hundred thousand?
Well, that one we have to be careful about because the new guidelines does not change for secondary school.
Right. No, but it does, but the first two are transitional, the second grade.
That's right.
Second one is third grade through six, so we can change it on those two.
Those two. That's right.
Yeah. So that, I think it should be, I think it should be clarified to, to all the wonderful people watching, listening, is, is that the new guidelines allow for twenty-five per hundred thousand, which I know several people mentioned, which is a big difference. Instead of having less than seven per hundred thousand, we can now open K through six with a case rate of twenty-five, less than twenty-five per hundred thousand. So that allows us probably to open a lot sooner than if we were in red. Also, that we are, I, the last time I looked, it was forty-one cases that we're in right now, so we still have a ways to go, but we are lowering a lot over every week. So hopefully, that continues. They did, they did specify in the guidelines that, that seven through twelve cannot reopen until they're out of the red tier. But, so that's part of our, sorry?
Well, I'm just gonna say except for special needs.
Well, no, special, but that's covered in the first one. That, so if we, if we change, if we change, number one, transitional kindergarten through second grade, students and identified students with moderate to severe disabilities in pre-identified special education classes would shift to hybrid instructional model no more than four weeks following Sonoma County case rate of below twenty-five per hundred thousand.
But my point is, is that we don't need to wait that long for special ed.
So you, you're thinking about modifying it even more for those groups to bring them back before that?
Because-
Okay.
The state has already said, you know-
How do you propose to amend that, Ellen?
Well, I haven't written it out.
I just want to throw out there also, just for literal, just logistics. If teachers started being able to get vaccinated on February first, it's still gonna be four weeks before the vaccines count as effective, right? If it's two weeks from, if you have to wait two weeks to get your second vaccine and then two weeks. So I agree with Ellen. I understand the urgency, and I want to, like, I get why up to four weeks sounds like four weeks. But it's also very likely that with the vaccines, it might, it may even be more than four weeks, which I don't, I don't want to put that out into the universe, but. So I hear and appreciate and agree with your hating of the vagueness of up to four weeks, but also I am less worried about it just because the contingency of the vaccine availability is really more where I see the timeline being the issue. I am less worried about it just because the contingency of the vaccine availability is really more where I see the timeline being the issue.
Well, and also we need to respect the fact that teachers have been teaching distance. I mean, you guys who were teachers know that. It's not, you get to snap your fingers, that you made lesson plans for, you know, distance, just to, okay, tomorrow, let's go to in-person, right? It's a completely different, so just to give time.
And it's not all in-person. Yeah, there's still a considerable amount of instruction that will be distance learning.
Gary, there are several.
At the same time.
Uh, Gary, there are several comments about the, you know, the four-week, six-week window. Of, you know, uh, my understanding is this is a, a logistics as well as kind of a. You know, ha- having to do with grading periods and whatnot. Could you speak to? The, 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 the transition periods that are necessary to ramp up these efforts?
Yeah, the, and it speaks a little bit to what some of our, um, some of our presenter or, uh, our. Our um, community spoke to in public session. Uh, our public comment, excuse me. The, there's a, there, there is a misconception out there right now that, that. There's something about planning that is keeping the schools from getting o, from reopening. We haven't reopened our schools because of case rates. That's what put us into distance learning. Case rates will take us out of distance learning. Operationally. We have done the lion's share of planning, all really the, for those who were at the board, last board meeting, I shared. We've done all the operational planning we could do. Up until this particular point in time right now, which is where we're at. Was identifying what's the trigger to bring, to bring students back. The one piece that will be tricky is what we have to deal with the personnel issues. Related to, you, a T, you have to have a teacher to be able to, or specific employees to be able to serve the students, so. There's a window of time, we think it'll be shorter, on the shorter end of the window. But we need some type of an operational window to be able to work under. To bring students back, we, because, because we don't necessarily know. What the operational considerations are going to be. For everything related to. Where we're gonna be responsible for doing asymptomatic testing. We have to do that every two weeks for, and, and at least make it available. We don't know how many parents. Will opt to have their students do that. We don't know how much, how many staff will opt to do that. We have to make sure that we've got a clean protocol in place. For, um, we've got a plans in place, but we haven't put them into, into operation. For um, temperature checks, all those types of things. And so the idea on the stagger is. Um, we anticipate if it runs fairly smoothly with the first tier, then we could quickly move to the, to the, the second. To the second tier and potentially even the third tier. But we need to have some kind of window to work off of, um, but we're certainly amenable to whatever the board wants to do. On, in these, in these uh situations as far as setting conditions. I'm trying to write, I'm trying to, secretary for the board, so I'm taking down notes. But I don't know what actually is going to be, again, it's just been individual board. Members um, comments, so I'm.
Maddie may have a motion.
I've jotting some things down, so.
Yeah, I do have a motion. I just, uh, I do want one other uh point of discussion that came up. From Susan Smith about. The seven through twelve. If we want to put in a caveat. That if we move to the red and there's only four weeks left. I don't know how to handle that one.
What do you mean, if we're in red, say, it's like.
Well, if you just go back for the last four weeks of school. Um, like we go into red and then there's like maybe two weeks left in school. Do we wanna put something in here or do we just wanna revisit it, maybe?
I'd be more in favor of revisiting it. I think it's a really.
I think so. I think it's too complicated.
You know, if there are a couple of weeks left. Uh, you know, especially with our twelfth graders.
Love to have them back.
Yeah, I mean, miss the end of their junior year, they haven't had a senior year, let's give them something.
Absolutely.
Okay, do you wanna hear my motion? Okay, and then you can change it all you want. I move to amend the first condition as follows. The Sonoma County case. So what it says is therefore be it resolved. Uh, Petaluma City Schools will utilize the following conditions as the criteria used to determine the PCS schools will make the instructional platform shift. From distance learning to distance learning slash on-campus learning hybrid. Sonoma County is. Has a case rate. That is. For. Sorry, I thought I put this down here, for K through, K through six, sorry, that is below twenty-five per hundred thousand. For K through six. And then uh B, below seven per one hundred thousand for seven through twelve. So it specifies the two different levels.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Cause otherwise it's all um, at twenty-five and we can't.
Okay, I second Maddie's motion so that we can technically be talking about it. Come on.
Okay, and as it says here, this is um, as established under the blueprint for safer economy, I changed that to as. Uh, reflected in the revised COVID nineteen and reopening in-person instruction framework. And public health guidance for K through twelve schools in California. I think it was issued last week from the California Department of Public Health.
Couple.
But I also move to change. Okay, alright, alright.
Something that, something.
Not all in one motion, okay?
Yeah, something to think about related to that.
Okay.
So the, the, it, it, it's not, it's not necessarily about the. I have to go back and look at the CDPH guidance on this. Let me pull it.
Well, it allows us to come back before we go to red tier.
Yeah, that's, that's not, um, that's not the issue. The issue is. The issue is related to, yeah. So just to be clear on that, just I'm going back, cause I'm looking at the guidance. If you're, if you're looking at it.
Yeah.
That, um, what would take place would be in that model. That at Cherry Valley and at Mc, at McKinley, the seven and eights would not be coming back. And, cause I had to go back and look specifically about whether. Eight exception, so that's important because in, in this process. And so. As I was writing this, let me make sure that this is, it wasn't, I did, cause I had already written something out. Um, let me see if this matches basically what you said. And then I'll show it to you, I'll be able to show this to you. That, um, number one was Sonoma County is identified as a red tier county as established under the blueprint. For a safer economy for secondary schools, grade seven through twelve. That Sonoma County is identified to have a case rate below twenty-five per a hundred thousand participants. For elementary schools TK through six. Is that telling, is that saying the same thing as what you were saying?
It was specific in the how many per hundred thousand, right Maddie?
Twenty-five per, yeah, she said twenty-five per hundred.
Yes, and uh, below seven per one hundred thousand is, is, is a purple tier. So to move into red tier, you have to be below seven, so it's the same thing.
It's the same thing for secondary, right? But not for um, special populations in secondary.
Oh, that, yes, we need to um. It, we could do that separately if you want.
I think we should.
It, it, it comes under later and for, be it further resolved.
Okay.
When we go into where uh the sequencing. That's when it describes the TK through, to, through second and uh students with moderate and severe disabilities.
But it also says no more than four weeks following Sonoma County being placed in the red tier status.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna move, that needs, that has to change. So that changes also.
Yes.
Say that one more time.
So we're still on the first resolve item one. And I think the motion on the table, Maddie expressed it one way, Gary expressed it another way. We need to solidify which is the, which is the um, which is the motion, which is.
I just needed written out, cause we're gonna have to show it here. We're gonna have to be able to show it and share.
Can you?
All panelists.
Gary, can you read out what you've um, what you have?
Yeah, let me do this, let me um. Let me.
I would also like to see it changed to within two weeks rather than four for that first group.
Well, you have to have two weeks after.
Do you, you have the document, um, what format did you put the document in? That you have it in its original?
It's a shared Google Doc.
Shared Google Doc?
Yeah.
What's the title on that?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Uh, let me, let me see if I can.
Students can do it, we can do it.
We definitely can do it.
I learned how to use Google Docs at Casa.
Yeah.
So I, I put a comment in the chat, I don't need, I don't know if this needs to be broken out, but just. A reminder that the Mary Collins sixth graders are technically part of the junior high program. So having them come back while their teachers are all, that, that might be complicated, so I, I think they should be grouped in together. Six, eight, so the sixth grader should be grouped in with the seventh, eighth grade return. I don't know if you need to delineate that, they'll know that, but.
Cliff, is that the same for McKinley?
Gary, I'm sharing it.
No.
I have it, I have it, it's twenty twenty-one fourteen?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, let's, we're gonna, it would be wise for us to just start again and, and write, and to make sure that we've got. We're, we're really down here at um, number one. How would we want? How are you looking to, to change this?
I like your wording, Gary.
Well, if you keep the first one. Sonoma County is identified as red tier as established under the blueprint. Uh, for. Grade seven through twelve. And then.
Semi-colon.
Oops, thank you. Working on it.
Same phrase, but with the case rate, Maddie, for the.
Yeah, but it's not in the blueprint. So uh, Sonoma County has an identified case rate.
Of twenty-five to per one hundred thousand, is that what it is?
Yeah, for K through six.
TK through six and special groups.
Yeah.
And, uh, and special.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, below.
Is it add or below?
Uh, identified case rate of uh below, uh, you can leave out the uh, just say below. Twenty-five per one hundred thousand.
Is it below or just twenty-five per one hundred thousand?
It's below.
So is this implying that if the Kate's, like, let's say we get to twenty-three, right? If they go up to thirty, does that mean that we are back to distance learning?
No, that's why you have the two weeks. That buffer.
Joanna, I think it's probably the same because the rule with the tier thing, they were saying that. And that's what happened in Marin County is they hit red, they opened schools. And then they went back to purple and they could stay in school because they had already started. And I'm just wondering if that's the same for case rate as it is for tier.
I don't know, I don't.
Does that make sense to you, what I just asked or said?
Yeah, yeah.
It does make sense?
It makes sense, I don't know whether it, that's what they'll say.
A whiplash of, of going back and forth.
So much new information all the time.
Yeah, so once you've started, even if the case rate goes back up a little bit, I think we can stay where we're at.
Then we need like a determination, then like if it gets to a certain number.
Is this what you're look, is this what you're looking for?
Yeah.
TK through six and special.
Uh, oh, yeah.
And.
I'm, I'm a little worried that it reads that it has to be red tier for seven and twelve and below twenty-five. I, I think it's just, it might just be semantics, but that's where.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think.
It's, it's. It's a case rate between one and seven per hundred thousand is what it. Is so, so. Let me, let me just put it right off of.
Oh, no, I ju, I literally just mean the and between.
The and should go.
Should be separate resolved clauses because.
If we're talking about case rates for TK through six, just.
Sorry.
Consistency sake, I think we should do, say the same thing for secondary case rate rather than tiers. Yeah, so it's consistent.
What if I just add it, great?
Okay. And then do we need, is established under the blueprint for a safer economy, do we need that?
Yeah, probably should put it under both.
Okay.
I think just so we have something to reference, because I'm sure there'll be something else next week, so.
Okay.
I don't know, the below twenty-five individuals was through the new uh, California Department of Public Health guidelines. I don't know whether it's part of the blueprint. Cause the blueprint came out in the summer.
This is the um.
I refer to that.
It's, it's called the California Department of Public Health COVID nine, no, um, COVID nineteen. And reopening in-person instruction framework and public health guidance. Schools in California twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year.
That's what I said.
This is a, as a stat, it's really. Here, let me, let me wordsmith a little bit on this one.
And then for number two, we need to include special ed and second language learner. What'd you call that, Sheldon? This.
ELDs, the English Language Development, no, sorry, ELD classes, right? Is that the phrase?
No, it's um.
You said ELD specific courses?
Yes.
So. We should, or one, wherever, whatever number it is. Special ed and ELD specific courses is at the twenty-five. Yeah.
No, no, not K through twelve, oh, yeah, sorry.
The title, the, the long title.
My concern with the confusion of the language is that what are one and two should probably be different resolved clauses. And three should be in both of those resolved clauses so that. K or TK through six is separate from. The rest, does that make sense, like?
Well, isn't it separate by number?
It is, but the, the language it, about reopening is in the original resolved clause, so I think. Maybe I'm just literally going crazy.
Well, it was, it was in the original resolved, had the and, and then the vaccinations.
But maybe I'm just.
Can't it just, I mean, those are the conditions and then the, the other part was the, uh, the further resolved was this.
The shift.
The definition of the.
Still is on the umbrella of the two of them, if that makes sense. Where they're two separate, they're two separate shifts from distance learning to hybrid. Where they're two separate, they're two separate shifts from distance learning to hybrid. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I, what I.
To be tied together, they should just be one.
They should, they should be two separate resolved clauses in the same, in this, in this document, um.
So, yeah, it should be one and two, right? Under be it further resolved. Or therefore be it resolved. One, we're talking about TK and two, TK through six plus ELD specific courses and special.
Maybe it's only because I can't see the whole thing, but I just, what, yeah, the way that I'm trying to do it would be that they're two separate, therefore be it resolved clauses that would both be one and two. And so for.
One would be dealing with secondary and one would be dealing with.
A TK through six and special ed and ELD.
I think this is, I mean, this, all we're doing in one, two, and three here are establishing the conditions that trigger the actions coming next. And what this says is the conditions for, uh, you know, K, sorry, the conditions for, K through six is this, the conditions for seven through twelve is that. And then plus the, the vaccinations.
Okay, as long as that's how it reads to you all, I'm comfortable. To me, that's not how it reads, but I.
I'm not sure about number one because we're, we're kind of not moving away from the idea of tier.
I think what, I think what we need, Gary, is perhaps on number one, start it with, you know, these are the conditions. So start number one with for grades seven through twelve, comma, Sonoma County is identified, blah, blah, blah. Number two is for grades TK through six, comma, Sonoma County, et cetera, there.
Yeah, perfect.
Is that what you were thinking too, Caitlin?
Yeah, it's, I, I know it's just semantics, but I, I don't, I wanna make it as unconfusing as possible and maybe I'm getting more confusing, but I just.
No, that, that, that makes sense. The way that you and Sheldon both collaborated, that totally makes sense.
Yeah, okay, cool. Like, I know this is dragging out the process, so I really am sorry.
No, 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 it makes it clearer, Caitlin. It makes it clearer. It's like someone can go down and go, oh, okay, I get it. Okay.
Do you, do you wanna say for number one, for grade seven through twelve and Mary Collins' sixth grade students?
I think that makes sense.
Just to be super specific.
Okay, Cliff, adding more words.
I, I know, you know, like a long resolution isn't necessarily super sexy, but it clears.
Tell me, re, re, tell me again, the rationale for that, because sixth grade at Mary Collins is junior high?
Is.
Yeah, there's six, seven, eight is one program, same teachers. So if you split and say sixth grade comes back, it's gonna mess up the whole program. It's gonna be difficult to do all of that at once.
Their classes and teachers.
So, yeah, with the exception of Mary Collins.
The problem with that is that's not the way the Department of Health, uh, guidelines are written.
Yeah, that's.
But it is a, uh, it is a charter.
That doesn't.
Would that make a difference? I don't know whether they, I can't remember it because I read through that thing three times.
So the, so the issue is this, the issue is that you, you, you don't wanna conflate two separate things. One is a, a certain set of conditions related to, to COVID. They're, they're just, they're, they're just COVID specific conditions and one is a vaccination specific, um, series now. What you what you could do is there's a, there's a number of issues still here. You, you can't put, you can't put at the end of the second, um, condition, the piece related to special ed and EL right there. Because it doesn't matter what, whether they're special ed or EL. It's, it's, it's based on grades. Grade span seven, twelve can't come back. However, they've been allowed to come back via the cohort.
Right.
They, the cohort, it says very clearly in the guidelines, these guidelines here, it says the guidance does not change for cohorts, which allows up to sixteen individuals, high need students and staff, that's EL, special ed, to meet on campus for instruction. So, so it would be, it would be whether you used, um, an indicator to trigger the cohort starting. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So you would put in, if you were doing that, if that's what the board wanted to do, you would put it down under the further resolve and you would identify it. There is a term, when you use that term cohort, it means something in CDPH language. It, it, it references that. So if your intent was to, to have the cohorts begin for ELD specific classes and the cohorts to begin for, um, the identified special education classes, you would put that down in number one.
Cause it, cause we have to say, cause.
Or you would just keep it, give it its own stage that would begin. You would just say the same thing. Like, I could try to, to write something for that. Um, it would be, it would be written very similar to what one, two, and three, that, that model. It just would say the cohorts will begin, no, it, you know.
And that.
Then.
And that, that specific one would be for the secondary because we've already got elementary dealt with. So if we're talking about cohorts, we're talking about K through twelve, do we need to put it like that?
Well, you know that you're, um, you know that you're, the issue is related to your secondary because if your elementaries are coming back, when the elementaries come back, they will come back special ed and everything.
Right, so we gotta, we gotta say secondary in there.
Yeah, I would put it in as.
Oh, no, that's not necessarily true. I take that back because it's also, you've got South County Consortium preschool.
Yeah.
Preschool programs, things like that. So you would have to, it would be elementary and secondary.
Yeah, TK through twelve for them.
But that's not a, that, that is a sequence that, um, because basically what would happen would be this. The cohort trigger, the cohort trigger would be the vaccination in this, in this particular resolution. It wouldn't be case rate.
Okay.
Why, why do you say that?
Because of the phrasing.
It's, it's a cohort. You don't, you, case rates are irrelevant. The case rates for co, cohorts are not, do not fall under the changes in the public health guideline, guidance. They remain the same.
Just like we have cohorts at all the elementaries.
If you want them to stay, follow the, the guidelines, then you wouldn't pull them out and say anything. You would just, you would just follow what you have written. So it's, it's one, it's, I don't know if that makes sense. It's one way or the other.
I wanna state it as cohorts and then where, where you talk about vaccine, you just say have access and opportunity. So that's pretty open. Yeah. Because according to Dr. Harrington, special ed, um, teachers are right up there as far as getting vaccinated, right?
So what would, what would happen if the board chose to go that way? That one would go as number one. Number one would become number two. Number two would become number three.
Which, which, which one?
This, this.
That part, okay.
Words, this is. This would be the.
ELD.
And ELD.
But, but it says if conditions one and two listed above have been met and that doesn't apply to cohorts.
Right.
So that would have to be.
We can do a separate, uh, further resolve for special ed and ELD.
Without.
I think that makes the most sense, just for clarity.
Yeah, I agree.
Parents' sake.
You could.
Yeah, and also we have to have one, two, and three listed above. Further resolved if conditions number one, number two, number three.
Think I know what you're saying, so let me, let me give it, give it a shot.
Cause we added one. Oh, you just have to add it, so.
What a good, I'm sorry, I keep yawning.
It's actually, this one would be one, two, and three.
Yes.
And this.
This one, it has identified students with moderate and severe disabilities.
Yeah, but we're taking them out because they're making that.
So you're gonna take those out? Okay. Put them above.
Those K through twelve.
Yeah.
And we're just saying, these are gonna happen once teachers have access to vaccines. That's the only criteria for that.
I think this is what you're.
And what was it, Sheldon? Um, English Language Development?
ELD specific courses.
There you go.
I wrote it down because otherwise I would never.
I thought that was really good, Ellen.
I know my.
Let me see what that's called. September fourth. September.
That's good.
That's good.
That identifies what we're referring to.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the legal right now, so.
I don't think we adjust, uh, Mary Collins.
You say you don't.
On, 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 on second thoughts, you should just leave them alone. Cause they also have mul, they have multi-age grades, so if we're gonna carve out all these exceptions, we can just deal with them.
Yeah.
When we hit the right spots. Yeah.
Sorry, Amy.
Is that what you were? I'm not sure that's what you were looking for, but that's, that's what I, that's what I heard you say. So we, maybe we should go through, look at.
We have to adjust also down below in further resolved, um, not red tier. It says placed in red tier for transitional gar, uh, kindergarten through second and more than four weeks following Sonoma County being placed in red tier. We've changed that to.
I gotcha.
Having a case rate.
Right.
Below twenty-five per hundred thousand.
I'd like to make it two weeks instead of four.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that one.
And.
I think, uh, following Sonoma County achieving a case rate of below twenty-five per hundred thousand. Achieving. Uh, below twenty-five for one hundred thousand. And that would be the same thing below it for third through sixth.
Yeah.
I am done.
Okay, can we talk about the weeks?
No, we need to still do the, uh, I think you still have other ones on here.
Okay.
Sonoma.
Yeah, we have to do that as well.
Yeah.
Seven and below, or below seven.
In one, seven, yeah.
Starting to get dizzy.
Okay, sorry, guys.
Sorry. We'll accept zero, so it's below seven, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, just say seven or below.
Well, if it's, but, but if it's below, it, they, they, they say it this way for a specific reason. I think it's because you jump into another, other categories.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's open as few cans of worms as possible.
Can we, can we just go back? I, there may be other changes, but I, I would probably better if we go through it at least now first and if. So does, Joanna, do you wanna read it? From.
Do we read the whole thing again or from the now therefores? Okay. I'm gonna pull it up since I, you shared it with me earlier.
Okay.
A little bit bigger. Okay. Now, therefore be it resolved that Pedaloma City Schools will utilize the following conditions as the criteria used to determine when PCS schools will make the instructional platform shift from distance learning to distance learning slash on-campus learning hybrid. One, for grades seven through twelve, Sonoma County is identified as a red tier county COVID nineteen case rate between one and seven per one hundred thousand people as established under the reopening in-person instructional framework and public health guidance for K through twelve schools in California. Uh, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Two, for grades TK through six, Sonoma County has an identified COVID nineteen case rate below twenty-five individuals per one hundred thousand for grades.
Oh, you can, yeah, you can get rid of that.
For one hundred thousand individuals, period. Okay, as established, okay, I'm just gonna read number two again. Number two, for grades TK through six, Sonoma County has an identified COVID nineteen case rate below twenty-five individuals per one hundred thousand people as established by the reopening in-person instructional framework and public health guidance for K twelve schools in California, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Three, Pedaloma City School staff have had access and opportunity to receive a food and drug administration approved COVID nineteen vaccination series. And be it further resolved that Pedaloma City Schools would strive to implement the following reopening sequence of condition three listed above has been met.
Yep.
One, establishment of instructional cohorts, CDPH cohort guidance, September fourth, twenty twenty, for identified students with moderate to severe disabilities in pre-identified special education classes, preschool, elementary, and secondary, and English language learners, and identified ELD coursework secondary. And be it further resolved that Pedaloma City Schools would strive to implement the following reopening sequence if conditions number one, number two, and number three listed above have been met. One, transitional kindergarten through second grade, grades TKK one and two, students and.
Oh, you can eliminate the end.
Yes.
Yes. One, transitional kindergarten through second grade, grades TKK1 and 2, students. Shift to the hybrid instructional model, no more than four weeks following Sonoma County achieving a COVID-19 case rate of below 25 per 100,000 people. Two, third grade through sixth grade, grades 3, 4, 5, and 6, students would shift to the hybrid instructional model no more than four weeks following Sonoma County achieving a COVID-19 case rate of below 25 per 100,000 people. Three, seventh grade through 12th grade, grade 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Students would shift to the hybrid instructional model, no more than six weeks following Sonoma County achieving a COVID-19 case rate between one and seven per 100,000 people. And be it further resolved that each sequence may involve a staggered start and is dependent on a number of operational circumstances. I think that's always changed.
Yeah. The first.
No, go ahead.
Just minor editing, the first, and be it further resolved regarding the secondary, or the special ed and English language learners. If conditions three, just take out the S on conditions.
Yeah.
Conditions. And. The next, and be it resolved, set, number one, the last clause, COVID-19 case rate below 25 per 100,000, just take out the of. Do that for the rest of them. Is that right, Maddie? English teacher?
I probably would put in the, but no, I'm known for being.
I always made students, students.
For the, for the number one by itself, if condition three is listed, has been met. Identified is capitalized, and that shouldn't be the second line there for identified students.
Thanks, Cliff.
Nice, good catch.
Spanish, Spanish teacher.
Okay, now can we talk about the weeks? Four weeks, six weeks?
Do, do we have to move to amend this, or do we do it at the very end?
We're gonna have to, but we, we've been doing it all together, so let's just go ahead and.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, go ahead, Ellen.
Well, I would like to see it two weeks, and I'm, I'm confused about why the high, the secondary is six, is more. I don't understand that. It's why we need more weeks for the secondary than we do for the elementary.
Gary, can you, or someone speak to that? So, do we get to the red, or not to the red, sorry, to 25 tomorrow? Like, what, I guess logistically, does that look like? Why we need this number of weeks?
So we would recommend a stagger, because we don't know what potential issues we're going to have. We have to meet the the California, our, our, our guidance plan that we have to submit to the state, we have to meet that. All the criteria is for that, so we wanna make sure. So, knowing that we, we have to do a stagger. We could say, we could stagger the weeks, but that creates a fixed stagger when we potentially could even move faster. We know that the, in these particular conditions, we have a, we have a good sense of when vaccination would end, so we could start almost immediately. So, it's a question of get, you know, how do you, if you put a, a, a hard number, we'll follow the hard number. But it doesn't give us any leeway as far as if we are having issues that I don't even know what those issues particularly might be.
So, and, and also, the other thing you have to consider is, you know, once we survey families and find out who's gonna come back, who's gonna remain. We may caution, caution carefully, may have to do some scheduling, master scheduling, changes in movement. So that counselors would tell you that's gonna take some time. So we're trying to find it.
Secondary.
Secondary, yeah. If we can do it without moving kids around in their schedules, great, you know, we'll do that, but it may take a little time to adjust that.
Um, I don't know if this fits in with this conversation, but let's just say on February 14th, the case rate is 24, and then like three days later, it's up, back up to 28. I mean, I.
Then we would stay in, we would stay in.
Okay.
Wait, wait, say, we would stay in, what?
Once you have, once you have opened, then the criteria for you not staying open has to do with, if you have levels of infection taking place at your school sites. If you're having infections at a certain number, percentage, then you would start closing down programs, particularly classes, programs, or school.
So, so bouncing off of that question, so, let's say it gets down to 24, and so we're putting everything in place, but we haven't exactly started school yet, because we're doing all the logistical stuff. Do we, does that stop everything if we go back up, or once we've made that decision, can we stick with?
Yeah, that's a great question, Ellen. We would, we, at that, if that was a situation that occurred, we would call a board meeting and ask for some direction. If, if that took place where it was before we'd actually physically opened the, opened the doors, and we could share every, all the information about where we're at with reopening. You know, most of the things related to this are really, really, as far as reopening resolution are really more related around case rate. The challenges at, at the second, like Cliff said is right, the, the challenges of the secondary are having the resolution is everything for us. Because now we can start moving on, we, on potential timelines, because what we'll have theoretically, if we have a potential vaccination schedule and supplies start coming in, and we're getting a consistent dosage on a week-by-week basis, then we'll know automatically what, when this box will get checked off, right?
Okay.
And if we remain below 25, we'll know roughly around when this start date would be on at least related to elementary. Secondary is a little trickier, obviously, because it's a different, it's a case rate guidance. And they, they're later in the, in the vaccination cycle. That may change, though, who, you know, as they, as they start picking up speed and with, with, with doses, getting them out, but there's. This will allow us right now to start doing our surveying and start getting some specifics down and doing whatever we need to do to make sure that we're, we're ready to open so that we don't get towards the end of the window. You know, the emphasis, the most important thing there is the no more, no more than.
Yeah, exactly. So we have flexibility in there.
We have to have a little bit of flexibility with that. I mean, we have been, we have, it's all gonna be dependent on, on, I believe that, that, that the conditions, conditions going back up here, conditions one and two, two for sure, possibly one, may outpace condition three.
Yeah.
Condition three may be the last of the three conditions that comes, comes forward. So it's good that we have it, those, those down, but we won't have a, this isn't a, we're gonna know enough a couple weeks prior to be able to already be ready to deploy once, once that final vaccination access and cycle is, is through.
Because I just think the sooner, just as, as, as I think it was Caitlin said, the sooner we can open our doors once the case rate where it needs to be, the better off, because we don't wanna have to say, oh, the case rate went up and we haven't got, we haven't opened our doors yet, so therefore we're, you know, we're two steps backwards.
Right.
I, I think that was my issue with the, with the weeks, and I understand it's up to no more than, which means it probably won't be four weeks, and it probably won't be six weeks. I'm just, you know, I don't trust this disease. And so, it just makes me really uncomfortable when we finally can do it, and then we take too long to actually do it, and then we have to step back.
We have to step back because people are getting sick and dying, like, that's a whole different conversation. Like, I'm hearing you say you don't trust this disease, and I don't either.
Right.
I don't, I also don't want us to get stuck promising to open if the cases are suddenly back. I mean, that's not what we're discussing, I just, yeah.
I know, that's why I think we need to get that clarified. Like, we've hit this level, we're, we're getting ready to open. If, if the case rate goes up two or whatever, can we still open? Because we're in the process of.
Well, now, now by setting a marker, and I'll talk a little bit, once you're done with the resolution, about how we're gonna be doing weekly communications on this, because now we have, we have a, we have some really specific guidance for reopening, and we're gonna want and encourage people to track that as we will. As, you know, we start putting those, those final pieces in place, the, 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 the guidance that the Department of Public Health came out with on January 24th is a whole new model and a whole new checklist, but it's not new work. We're already did, we've already done 75% of that work. We just need to put it into their new, their new checklist, and prior to completing that checklist, we, you know, we, we needed this to be able to do that, and so, whatever you guys land on here will allow us to take the next steps that we need to take with the stakeholders.
So, you can start, once we have this, you can start the survey of families and staff.
Because once we have, once we have this, we'll start, we will, we will, we will send a communication out most likely tomorrow. And that will follow by a communication that will go, start going out to specific groups on Monday or Tuesday. And so, just speaking related to, to students and parents, what we would be sharing with them is, let's just talk, let's just talk about one strand, and that's transitional kindergarten through second grade. We would present to them, they would see the reopening guidelines, they would see the hybrid model. We go back over that. A lot of folks haven't looked on, on the district website or didn't attend the meetings. We would go through that and say, okay, this is what it's gonna look like exactly. And then we were trying to determine how many folks are going to stay in a distance-only model, and how many are moving to the hybrid model. And we would start that process, but we'd make sure that we dialed in this group number one first, and we had that figured out related to staff, students, and then we would work through our, our phases accordingly. And they've already started, you know, in anticipation of your, of a resolution, departments have already started with how, what that, that survey information's going to look like, and how we're gonna communicate out staff.
What about the second, Cliff? What about the secondary hybrid schedule? Where, I know you guys were talking and you had a whole bunch of examples. Have you landed on one?
So, we have a meeting tomorrow, and we have two next week. We're, we're basically narrowed down to one. There's two on the table, but one of them is basically gonna be taken off the table with this new guidance now.
Okay.
And depending, depending on how close to the end of the year we do come back. I mean, so, for example, if, let's say we came back April 12th, the day, you know, the Monday following spring break, there's eight weeks left. We, you know, we'll have to determine, do we go with the three-period model and do four weeks of three periods, and then switch and do the last four weeks of three periods? Or do we stick with the six periods that we've been doing the entire year? You know, is it worth it to change it by then? You know, maybe not. If it's even later, then it probably will be six and not three. So, it's kinda gonna depend, but knowing what we know now about when our staff is scheduled to get vaccinated for the second dose, if that holds out, yeah, that's kinda pushing us in one direction with our schedule. So we'll, we'll have something finalized before the next, before the next board meeting, and we're gonna be surveying families right around that same exact time for the secondary.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're gonna start serving families when? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
Monday, Tuesday, but we're focusing, the first group's gonna be the, the first. We need to make sure we get that out right away.
Okay. And do we know anything about vaccines?
Yes. Well, we, we know what this was, what was in the paper.
What's in the paper?
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 no, I, well, it, it is, was more or less accurate to all the information that we know about. In, in its summary, it is that the plan, assuming that the county public health receives doses from wherever they receive doses, which I believe is California Department of Public Health, who's facilitating that. If those come in tomorrow, or I'm sorry, Thursday, we will turn around with a communication that will go to our, all of our employees that are 65 or older for them to set up a time, what I anticipate will be Rancho Cotati High School sometime next week for their first dose, which I believe will be Moderna, however, you never know. It could be Johnson &amp; Johnson, and you don't get to pick.
Probably gonna be Moderna. I mean, my husband's in the probation department, and they've already started vaccine, vaccinating all those people, and it's been.
Which means that our, our employees would go in the third week following that, or third, or third or fourth week, depending on, on how, how doses come in. We're, we're in quadrant C. That was, that probably will not change. I don't anticipate it changing, and there's just a lot of assumptions on that. The most, the greatest unknown right now is whether the supply chain will come through or not. But we would be reaching out to our transitional kindergarten through second grade teachers, we'd be reaching out to our special ed teachers, our ELD teachers, and staff that serve those populations, and they would be the first group to go. So even though elementary in the county is going first, by and large, also in the entire county, those same populations of secondary teachers will be going first. And it's a, gonna be a fairly simple process, we've been told. People will need to bring like a badge or a pay stub, something that identifies themselves. We will have staff that will support the, I guess we would, I guess you'd call it the vaccination or inoculation process. It's churning, they're gonna try to churn about 18,000-plus educators, public, private, and, you know, preschool, preschool all the way up to community college, JC, during this, this period, and that's all being coordinated by SCO. So, the only thing that's really an unknown is, is if we've built it, it's being built, will they come? Vaccinations. We know the people will come. We just don't know about the, and it's anticipated, I think, that in countywide, that 80% of, of employees will will choose to do that. So, which we hope to do.
So just, so if, if, if the timeline that the county shared with us stays and doesn't change, and things don't get sped up, the 65 and older group will have had their second dose by the first week of March, or at least the opportunity to. The rest of elementary will have had their opportunity the week preceding spring break, March 22nd, that week. Secondary would be over spring break. So that's kinda the timeline that they showed us, which, you know, we don't know how accurate that will be.
According to, according to this resolution, it just says that it's available and accessible. So it doesn't say anything about having both, both shots or anything like. So it doesn't say anything about having both, both shots or anything like that. So, um, because then if we start pushing, we're, now we're looking at summertime. So I like the way it's worded, is what I'm trying to say.
What, where, what do we, do you want to read through the?
We, we have, we actually have a motion for these amendments. And we better pass it because we forgot what the old document looks like. So we have to approve the amendments first and then we can go back to voting on the resolution itself.
And we already moved the, the amendments in, so we just voted at this point, Joanna.
Move to approve the amendments of the resolution.
Have to vote.
I still move.
I thought we. Favor? Opposed?
Now we're back to the resolution itself.
Any more discussion now that we've approved those, um, amendments? Maddie?
No, I, I, uh, looks, looks, looks good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Um, and I just want to make it clear for the public. Anyone wants to speak to this again, just so it's clear, these numbers are the guidance that we have been given by the Department of Health. We did not arbitrarily come up with these numbers. Um, this is what we are allowed to do and this is what, is what we're doing. It's permissible by law. Do you want to add anything of that nature?
Uh, yeah, the only thing I would add to that is that, um, the K through six waiver process is no longer in effect according to these new guidelines.
Yes.
Oh, okay. And I would also like to just point out that um, it's no more than, and it probably won't take six weeks or four weeks is what I'm hearing. Um, cause that was one of my issues was six weeks, but it doesn't sound like it'll take that long.
Um, I also want to add slash point out slash, 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 excuse me, specify that hybrid really means families are able to choose whether they want to keep their students at home or send them. Um, a lot of districts that we neighbor have touted that they're back to in-person learning. And as Maddie and I realized at a training earlier this week, um, that can mean as few as 20% of the students are in person, which to me would count as hybrid if I were to classify it. Um, so I, I want all families to know that if they want to keep their kid in what we kind of consider distance learning, that's their option. And even under these guidelines.
And that'll be part of the survey that's put out for families and staff.
Exactly.
And there were a lot of amendments. Uh, will this be sent out once it's all?
Yeah. So what will happen will be that, um, I've already completed probably 80% of a, uh, communication that was waiting on whatever you were going to do tonight for resolutions. We will, um, it'll go over the, these conditions. It'll send them the full resolution, but I'm going to give them also the, the, the boilerplate short version. Um, it'll also give them access to where they can review current case numbers on the Sonoma County, uh, dashboard. Uh, for public health, they'll also get a link for where to go to get more information about the vaccination website. If they want more information on that, um, they will, um, we'll talk about some of the other public health conditions that are required for us to return. Like we've already, um, um, we had, um, established, um, distance requirements. We've already, we already know how, how we're going to meet those. How we're going to meet the filtration issues, air purification issues, kalosha safety protocols. And define, uh, processes of notification, quarantine, contact tracing. Um, we're finalizing a, another vendor for asymptomatic testing. And have time to be able to have that in place, ready to go. And we will be, they will be getting, beginning on Monday. The survey will get into the specifics about what would look like. So that when they're making, when those parents are making a, giving us a, again, it's not a, um, hard and fast, they may change their mind between now and whenever they, they, we truly, um, come back. But they'll have the information they need to make at least a, a, um, February, early February, uh, judgment on what the likelihood of them staying in 100% distance learning or going to the hybrid model. Um, and then, um, you know, they will, all the stuff will get posted on our COVID-19 hub and they'll, they'll know where they can go to get that information.
I appreciate the communications, uh, being planned out. And one thing that stuck out with me with all the, the comments that we heard tonight and what we've been getting in emails is, uh, we probably haven't been communicating what we've been doing all along well enough, because there's a lot of misinformation, uh, out there. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy and proud frankly, that we're, uh, where we're at, that we're prepared to move forward.
And thank you, Sheldon and Joanna and Gary for starting this resolution. You know, you had a lot of work in there that was already set that we really didn't have to deal with, so.
It's better now. That's good.
Also.
Collaboration.
We have to vote, Madam President.
Wait, I think Ellen had one more thing to say.
I just wanted to echo Sheldon that the more information we put out there about what we're doing and how we're moving towards reopening, the better. Because I mean, that's been the complaint. What's going on? What's going on? So.
As well as we are Sonoma County, our county is separate from other counties as much as we might want to join them.
Yeah.
I mean, but this is the guidance for our county and this is what we have to go on, so.
Do we need to move this back in or has it already been moved in?
On the table, it's ready to be voted on as.
Right. All in, okay, all in favor of resolution 2021 dash 14.
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Opposed?
And we still got more to get to.
Anyone need a break? You guys just want to?
I, I would like.
Break would be good. And then if participants want to jump off and help their kids with homework or put them to bed or.
I don't think we have much left on. I don't think there's any just.
Yeah. I'm fine. Yeah, I'm fine. To just continue.
Yeah.
All right. So next action item, uh, 12.1.1 approval of the resolution.
Can I see you guys?
I'm, I'm going to leave it up for the, for the. cuddle with it.
Sorry. Okay, I.
Approval of resolution 2021 dash 13 of the board. Girl, I gotta read this thing first. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My lights are like flickering now, so. Okay, um, approval of resolution 2021 dash 13 of Board Education, uh, with the Peddleman City Elementary and Peddleman Joint Union High School Districts, County of Sonoma, State of California proclaiming January as School Board Recognition Month.
I move to approve resolution 2021 dash 13.
Discussion?
Second?
Maddie seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you, Maddie.
I think it's gratuitous and unnecessary.
No, it's weird.
Um, I want to put it out there that I don't think any of the five of us put it on there. I think it's just kind of a that is done, just like we celebrate all other bodies, like administration and principals and teachers and CSEA staff. Um, so I, I still feel weird voting yes on it. I don't want to like vote to give myself a pat on the back.
You vote no.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, that's, that's just where I'm at. I wanted to give you all a heads up. I might vote no, I might abstain.
I'm kind of.
Can I convince you otherwise? Are you open to be convinced?
I'm all open to be convinced.
I think that, um, I think that school boards are, um, the one piece in that rationale, and it is boilerplate. You're right about that. Um, the one piece that hits home to me is the part that says offer an accessibility to voters that is unrivaled by other public office holders. That everything that, um, you guys go out of your way to make yourselves accessible to the public, um, whether that is a positive thing or not a positive thing for each and every one of you or for the, your constituents, you do it. And, um, that doesn't happen in all of government unless, I don't know if you, how lucky, uh, or how successful some of you have been to be able to even see your local legislators um, and have that kind of accent.
Turn the email. I know that because I've tried.
So I, I, I think that, um, that in a, uh, in a, it was kind of mentioned a little bit today by one of the speakers. In a, um, community where, uh, there are, there are becoming less and less connections that keep us together. One, one connected, connected area is the school system. And one hub of that are boards, our school boards. And it is, and, and I speak from a, from a, 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 a different perspective. More, I would say not a, a, a unique perspective because I see what takes place behind the scenes, behind the curtain. And, you know, we thank you a lot for the, um, millions and millions of arrows that you take um, every month, every day. Um, there's a lot of arrows that get shot. And it's, it is, it's to some, I'm sure that there are days where you feel like it's a thankless position, but we thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a yes.
You convinced her. Okay.
God, do my Gary.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Very sweet. Thank you.
That meant a lot, I have to say.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Um, once Caitlin's composed herself, we will vote. Caitlin, I love you and your emotion. Um, all right, um, all in favor?
Aye. We're done.
All right. So comments from the public on discussions slash information items. We will open the chat for a minute. Same as always, we cannot openly have a this conversation about it, but if you want to comment on, um, the discussion items, please put your first and last name and we'll open the chat for a minute.
Uh, and then again, that will be only discussion on SIPS or first reading of a new course proposal. It won't be discussion on anything else that's taken place prior, earlier or might take place at a future meeting.
The chat is open. All right, I'm going to close the chat. And.
I see one.
Where? Is there? Okay.
Sherry? Sherry?
Sherry Johnson, did you want to talk or, um, do you have a comment about the discussion item? You will have four minutes.
Sherry, you can unmute now if you wanted to present.
I don't know if it's a discussion. I just wanted to talk, I'm a special ed teacher at Santa Fe High School and we got our, our, our vaccination, our first one um, a week ago, Sunday. And they, there was a special tier, you know, we, we were filed under a different tier than the regular teachers. So I don't know if it goes for that for Marin, I mean, for Sonoma or not. But, um, I'm due to have my second shot on February 7th and that gives us plenty of time before we're talking about going in person. So I just, I don't know if that's on the, the, the agenda or not, but I just want to let you know that they did something in Marin for special ed teachers to get their, their vaccinations.
Well.
I, yeah, I, I can, I, I appreciate that. It's, um, it's a very complicated, I don't, I don't have an appropriate answer for it. I wish I could, I could answer that for you. We, we, um, each county is dealing with their county public health and, and their supply chain is, is completely different. From county to county, it's, it's, I still don't understand it. Um, for example, Sacramento County is, is, um, is far, far behind percentage wise where they should be in relation to other counties. So it's just, uh, it's, we still don't understand it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Sherry. Um, I think we had another comment. Carrie?
I'm not sure.
Is Carrie still on?
Guys thinking about.
If not.
I'm not sure that this is, is connected to the discussion.
Okay.
So.
All right, we will move.
We need to close the chat, um, Ashley.
It's closed.
Okay.
Cliff, waiting so patiently for your moment. Okay, so first up, um, 14.1.1 SIPSA planning updates.
All right, I will be brief but succinct at the same time. Try not to rush this. Um, so the board had asked, had, had tabled the SIPSA to the first meeting in February and asked us to go back and make sure, you know, all of the, the sites were addressing the gaps, the needs, um, you know, and, and to do so in, in a uniform way. So I just wanted to share with everyone, uh, the guidance that we gave them and what you're going to be seeing at the next meeting. So first thing I'm going to share is, um, this is from the LCAP uh, instructions. And in the LCAP, it specifically identifies and defines what you should be looking for as far as needs for a district. And in this case, we're going to apply it to each school site. So on the SIPSA's, there is no, there is no instruction like this. It just says, look at your data, identify needs. It doesn't say what a need should be or. So we decided to use this guidance, um, to be in alignment with the district LCAP. And to make sure every school site is viewing it the same way and we're, you know, we're, we're unified in that way. So, um, overall, um, if you look at the California school dashboard, which is kind of our report card, if you will, um, for any indicators, and I'll show you an example in just a minute. Um, that is in red or orange for the school as a whole, that is considered a need. And then for any student group that is two or more levels below the all students group, that's identified as a gap. So we, we're going to apply this to every school site. And then I will share again the actual dashboard, just to give you a flavor of this. That's the agenda. Nobody wants to see that. All right. So for example, Casa Grande. Um, as far as needs, they don't, they do not have any indicator in the orange or red. Okay, that doesn't mean that they can't choose, for example, math, which is in the yellow, that's something they want to focus on. But by definition, there's not any needs. However, there are gaps. So if you're looking at the little color wheel here, in suspension rate, they're in the green. So if there are any student groups in the orange or the red, those would be performance gaps. Same for graduation rate, same for college and career, same for ELA. For math, any groups in the red would be gaps. So if I go down here, I can see math, there are no groups in the red, but there are some groups in the orange. So this may be something that they address, but it's not technically a gap. I'll give you another example, McDowell, they do have several overall school needs. Chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, math, English language arts, they're in the yellow. And if you break that down, all student groups um in English are in the yellow, so they don't have any gaps at all. Whoops, sorry. Zoomed in way too high. And then Petalina Junior, just another example, um, they would have overall school needs and chronic absenteeism and suspension rate. And the way you're going to see this presented is, um, it it will say, um, you know, um, Petalina Junior High will say, we were in the re- we were in the orange for chronic absenteeism. Seven point four percent of our students were chronically absent, which was an increase of point nine, it's going to tell the whole story. So you'll get the color and you'll get, how did they get there? Was it an improvement, was it a decline, did they stay the same? So it tells more of the story and then they will identify, um, for example, here, they'll identify every student group where there is a gap, so they will have to call out, you know, students with disabilities or a performance gap in this area. You know, they're they're far below the all students group and they either made some gains or they didn't. So what you'll see as these come back um at the next board meeting is it's it's going to tell a more complete story and all of them are going to tell the same story. And then they're also going to tie in where in the SIPSA they are addressing these needs and these gaps. And some are going to identify things that don't meet that definition. But in addition to focusing on the needs and gaps, there's other things they're doing as a site. And then that, so right in the beginning, in the purpose and description, it's going to call out, you know, goal two, action three is where we address chronic absenteeism and goal three, action one, so. So it's it's more like the LCAP, it should be easier to follow that they are, you know, they are addressing the needs and the gaps. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, but that that's kind of the the guidance we gave them, and that's what you're going to see next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's that's really, really going to be very helpful, I think, even for for them, for us, for you, it's really great.
Well, there should be a connection between the.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, it was one of those epiphanies, like, why aren't these things connected? I mean, why 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 don't they use the same definition, it's, so we made it.
Thank you.
Cliff, thanks, I just have a clarifying question. I'm, I was just struck this time reading that, you know, the LCAP defines a gap as any student group performing two levels below the all student. In your experiences doing this in your career, have you ever seen a a identifiable group perform uh, you know, two categories above the all? And and that would not constitute a gap according to LCAP, but have you seen that?
Um, two, I don't know if I've seen two, I've definitely seen seen one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it it depends on your demographics, I mean, I've seen it probably mainly with um Asian students. You know, they're a smaller group typically and they might perform above the all students group. Um, if the all students group is made up mainly of the majority of your students, right? It's harder to, that, like, wherever that majority group, whatever ethnicity race that is, that's kind of, you know, that kind of sways the dial. So.
Thank you.
I appreciate you taking our recommendations and hearing what we had to say to make those adjustments. I know it's not easy, it's a long process to get those done in the first place, so appreciate that and for your explanation. All right, we ready to move on? First reading, sorry, item fourteen one point two, first read of new course proposal introduction to communications and media studies at Casa Grande High School. Is this Cliff as well?
Yeah, no, no big presentation here, but Casa Casa was working on this, didn't have it in time to bring it with all the others. Um, but as 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 hopefully you read in the rationale, they're interested in building out this pathway. They're going to be offering this course for the first time next year, they do have a CT credential teacher um who's teaching this course. Um, but the idea is to build this out into a full pathway over time, but next year, we're just going to start with the one class.
So it's not going to be part of the American Voices? I thought that taught the American Voices elective.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be a separate pathway?
Well, so a CTE pathway.
Oh, 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 yeah, okay, got it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So they can still be in that cluster and take this CTE pathway, yeah.
I I want to audit this class.
Yeah. As the communications professional, I think it's awesome that we're offering this class and you may be able to get our very own Ashley Collingwood to step in and give like a gap.
That would be awesome.
But I think.
Actually, do things. Ashley might not want to do it.
Um, I'll, yeah, her offline, I love that girl. Um, but like, actually, that's a really, I think it's really in line with Casa's big focus on like media literacy and digital citizenship. Um, so as a Casa grad, I'm, as a Casa grad and communications person, I'm very excited.
Sounds wonderful.
Sorry, Ashley.
All right, moving on, thank you, Cliff, again. Future business. Um, looks like the next meeting, we have a transportation update, discussion on spring study session as well. Discipline, First Amendment jurisdiction presentation on February twenty third, diversity recruitment and hiring March ninth, as well as the Fair Act update and LCAP presentation on four thirteen.
Yep, and all of these, all of these bad boys are um long presentations.
Bad girls, the non-binary, I'm sorry.
Um, Gary, is that uh discussion on spring study session, is that, does that include uh dual immersion?
Yeah, that included, that, the discussion would was, um, remember, you you had brought this up to put it on there, so it it was your opportunity to have to kind of voice some things that you were thinking as well as other people were thinking and try to get a sense of what you know, could we kind of land on a couple items that we really want to focus on? You know, moving forward, there's so many things, but um the uh, the, the transportation update's going to be an important one because um transportation's going to be not only, not only on the short term, they're going to talk about long range stuff, but they're also now are going to, this this whole process that we just went through with the resolution will kickstart some issues, I'm sure they'll talk a little bit to to that. Um, the First Amendment piece is going to be a a fairly meaty presentation. Um, Liz has already brought scenarios to for the our council to work on. Uh, pretty good ones, ones that we see all the time, you see all the time, and um, so she's going to be coming to present. Uh, Matthew's going to do a piece on um some of the work that he's going to be partnering with, um, circle up on the diversity recruiting and hiring, um, we're hoping to get some student voice um involved in some of the cur- um, discussion on curriculum, curriculum, not just Fair Act, but also just overall curriculum. And so um Ellen led us led us to a a a student group, so we're 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 working through that. And then, of course, the LCAP presentation will be a a an important one moving forward. Ensure that we're aligned and it's aligned with the goals that um the board wants to put forward, moving, moving. Moving on to twenty twenty one, twenty two.
Um, I'd like to hear if if any of those extracurricular co-curricular activities that we talked about having smaller groups coming on campus, if that's.
Maybe an update.
An update. Um, so, um, because I, that's another thing that we're all getting emails about, you know, asking about what about the talked about, and so I'd like an update on that.
Sure, we can do that. Um, the, do you want it as a, can we do, do you want it in a a presentation or do you want to do it as a as a uh an information like on a Friday letter? We, we, we've been generating, we have been meeting with um staff at each one of the schools on that one particular item, and Jamie's been collating and putting together information. Staff was, uh, we communicated with staff this week um with the um changes in the um, in the county um guidelines as far as a reopening. Um, and they're back at um setting up um extracurricular programs. Well, county health guidelines.
I'd like, I think we should do it as an update at a board meeting so that everybody can hear it, not just in the Friday letter.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
So we have every school site, so do you want? How do you want the update to be because it's.
High level.
Want examples of what certain schools are doing, I could.
For example, yeah, examples that we don't need to hear about every single.
Yeah, we don't need every school, I'd just like to know that it's.
Kind of get a sense.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an equity issue too, just like our, some schools are going to do a whole lot maybe and other schools not, so we can help the schools that aren't. You know, I mean, I want to.
Yeah.
Get a sense.
And also, you know, uh, to Phoebe's point earlier, to celebrate what we have been doing.
Yes.
And uh, you know, give us an opportunity to applaud the parents who've been helping out, PTAs, the school sites.
And when I I'm also wondering is if if schools are starting to offer some, are are students taking advantage of it and actually showing up? Or is it kind of an exercise in futility, so?
Maybe we could, yeah, maybe we can get an example of what the school sites have been communicating out, because I think I'm, I'm sure it's coming mostly from the school site since it is such differentiated.
Well, yeah, it's site specific.
How, what if we brought um, what if we broke it up into elementary and secondary?
Perfect.
Yeah, one example from each would be fine.
We had elementary, say, do the next meeting, or so one of the groups do the next meeting and the next one come the next, the the following meeting and they can, they can discuss the the things that they have been working on.
Do we have the meetings in February? We do, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty third and the ninth, it's um, I just know that it's going to be trans between transportation update and that, that'll be a pretty good, pretty, pretty good um presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, be great.
Okay.
That's all I got. Um, along those lines, um, I don't know if they should wait for another one. Um, do we know when, actually, let me ask a question first, do we know when um Diversifier Narrative is coming to speak, is that the next meeting?
No.
They're going to come with the um curriculum because we're going to, we're going to, um, we're going to um encourage, um. We've already had taken steps to encourage a conversation with um a meeting that Cliff's going to set up with staff.
Is that, is that March ninth, is that that one?
That will be the, that will be formal presentation, so we're looking, we're looking at trying, try, Cliff, you want to speak to that? Or Liz?
Yeah, we're we're going to, we're going to bring that along with the Fair Act presentation. We're going to have a, uh, we're having a curriculum committee meeting this month and we're inviting students who who are part of the Diversifier Narrative group, come and be part of that discussion, so we're going to do all of that together.
Oh, that's great.
And that's when Ethnic Studies will be discussed as well?
No, Ethnic Studies was today, that was the Casa American Voices, that's the only Ethnic Studies course we have in our district. Um, the Race Gender Ethnicity course, so they were, they were the ones presenting for that.
And that's fabulous. Definitely want to see more um like an act, like more Ethnic Studies courses, but that can be, I guess, discussed.
That might be a good thing to discuss at the study session.
And also within the curriculum committee, I would imagine.
Can we repeat whatever just happened, I texted President Pahn, but my internet went out for a second.
What?
Oh, so the um, we're going to do a transportation update.
Okay, cool.
On the ninth, uh, we're going to kind of land on some discussion items for spring study session.
Okay.
Probably have one of the groups, either elementary or secondary, come to speak to extracurriculars uh with the other one coming at a subsequent meeting, and then the other items of future business will, um, oh. And then diver- uh, we have a group of students that are going to be working with staff um at a a a meeting coming up and coming to to um to talk about Fair Act in uh on the, on the night.
Right. Awesome, um, I have one item for February ninth, but it'll be super short, just a resolution about um Black History Month and its impacts on our Black students, staff and families, and I'll be working with President Pahn on that. Very white. Carrie's, yeah.
Caitlin, okay. Anyone have anything else?
Everybody's getting a little punchy.
Yeah. Okay, but I do have one more thing, I'm going to try not to be punchy. Um, so we heard from, you know, many parents, we've heard from them through email tonight. Um, special ed students, ELL students, um just want us to talk about how we are supporting these students, I don't want to wait until the summer, right? Having them do summer school, like, how are we supporting them now? I don't know if that, I, maybe I am too punchy to talk about this at this point, but um.
A discussion item maybe at the next?
Oh, you want to talk about it now?
No.
No, no.
Sorry, oh, gosh, no, I'm not.
Oh, oh, no, I think it's a good, you know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of stuff that um both the uh Governor Newsom and uh President Biden have been talking about, about you know, helping schools with learning loss and so um emotional pro, you know, issues and um and how to uh address this sooner than later. So maybe by the next meeting, there'll be more information coming out about how they plan on doing that, especially with the governor's.
Invite um maybe one or two of the LMFTs or other folks in counseling just to be there for this discussion because they'll have kind of the best insight into, I mean, at this point, I know that there there are some students that just straight up aren't responding to their therapists. You know, whether it's school therapists or private therapists or, I mean, mental health.
Well, you know, and I was, and also the whole idea of summer school, wasn't it Caitlin at the at the meeting that we were on on Monday? Um, and they were talking about how you, you know, to have students go through this whole year of distance learning and then, you know, jerking into hybrid possibly and they need a break, teachers need a break. And so to go right into summer school, there was a lot of discussion about, was that at that one, Caitlin?
I don't think so.
Maybe it was at a different one, but anyway, it was just an interesting discussion that everyone's talking, that a lot of uh people at um, at educational levels are talking about summer school and additional.
Right, where, how do, how do we balance learning loss with socio-emotional development?
Well, and also just, yeah, just like um burnout.
Yeah.
Well, we have two experts here, we have, actually, three, we've got Melinda, Liz, Molly, um and we're talking about a couple different things, right? Like, we can't have the small cohorts yet, so what are we doing in the meantime? I would just like to hear from you, um, from you all, you know, how you've been supporting students. Um, as well as um how can we continue supporting students' um mental health and um how they've been supported thus far, especially after hearing from, um, what was that young man's name who spoke, Alexis? Yeah.
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 Well, I can speak a little bit to.
Well, we're, I, we can't.
Not right now, don't worry, Molly, yeah.
Okay, we should be doing it now, right now.
Sorry, Molly, I just called you.
But you're right, we need to have that conversation and we're going to, and, and we, like anything else in life, um relating to this, it there's going to have to be what Chris is going to ask for, because I can see it in her eyes right now, is if there's if there's a um if we come up with some specific long-term plans, those are going to be costs of money, which means monies need to be set aside specifically for that. That are, that maybe one time in nature, one time being like next year or the end of this year, but it's, but it's um it does need to be. one time being like next year, or the end of this year, but it's, but it's, um, it does need to be identified, because it doesn't necessarily, it hasn't been identified yet. And what does that specifically look like? Um, you know, how, what kind of, what do those services specifically look like, whether that's for mental health, or whether that's for EL, or whether that's for our youngest um, elementary students that are learning to read, you know? Um, we need to be able to name that and put it off to the side, and the, and, and boards are doing that around the state. And, and taking, taking money and restricting it for a specific purpose so that they can ensure that no matter what happens in their budget, those dollars are there to serve those students specifically, um, that they're the most concerned with. How'd it do, Chris?
All right, so I think that's it. Meeting adjourned, I don't have a gavel, Caitlin, bang my gavel.
You can have my gavel.
I do, on Sunday. All right, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for speaking with us, happy ten o'clock.
Thank you.
Bye.